Should be recording.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at six P M on June eighteenth. And I would ask that cell phones, including mine, be silenced at this time. Do avoid unnecessary disruption. And. Moving on to the meeting agenda, item one B, roll call, Katie Avalos. Here, Chris Robinson.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Karen Cronwell.
Here.
And Carlo Pennington Cross is also here. Um, before we head into our meeting, I would like to continue with my shtick of a little grounding moment. And today, because we have a long meeting, I'm just gonna ask you to join me in what I've been thinking about. Uh, we have a big meeting with a lot on the agenda. And I have been working today to ground myself in our work as educational leaders. And our responsibility to serve as role models for our students and community. And for me, with the material we're gonna be looking at, I'm thinking about four things. One is that we can be honest and transparent and direct and respectful as we talk about hard things. We can have courage to listen to criticism and to reflect on it fairly without being defensive about about myself, about ourselves. Uh, we can model efficiency and staying on task and optimism as we work through a lot of business, just as we ask our students to do. And I'm gonna work real hard on keeping a student-centered perspective, um, particularly around all the business work where it's hard to remember that kids is what we're about. So. That's what I'm thinking about. I would invite every participant to join me in that. All right, pledge of allegiance, item one C, anyone who would like to please stand and um, join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right on to item one D, agenda approval. Is there a motion? I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the agenda is approved. Um, moving on to item one E, uh, the approval of main minutes on the list is all uh, minutes for all main meetings that we held, so May first, committee of the whole, May nine, onboarding, May fifteenth, regular board meeting, May twenty ninth, special virtual boarding. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments?
Yes. I have a few um, just notes uh, that were our onboarding meeting, which is the onboarding meeting has no times for um, like meeting opening motions to adjourn. I think those are just like kind of small details, but it doesn't really have started or ended or motioned. Uh, May fifteenth, item four B, it says we approved monthly financials and a check register, but we only approved the check register. I wanna make that pretty clear. Uh, item sixty failed to mention that there was discussion about the depository and requested follow-up, which was the caveat to approval of the depositories. Um, and then for item two, oh, this might be a different meeting, sorry, two A, this, the um, I'm sorry. Special virtual board meeting, item two A, I just would add a sentence after we um, voted around, um, Ms. Young giving some background on the new business manager start date. Just so that that's on public record. And that's all I have.
Anyone wish to disagree or discuss Danielle's comments, all of which seem to make good sense to me. And thank you for the careful review. Any other comments? Okay, Anna, do you feel like you got good notes on that? I was not able to keep up.
Okay. I've been taking notes too.
So um, subject to those proposed amendments, um, are we ready for a vote then? All right, so this is a motion to approve the main meeting minutes um, with the changes proposed by Danielle Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, those are approved. Moving on to item two A, public comment, at this time, any visitors who wish to may speak on any non-agenda item. Are there any visitors who wish to do that? Mr. Martin?
Hi, it's nice having you.
Anyone online who wishes to make a comment or ask a question?
No one in the chat? No one in the chat? No one in the chat?
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to agenda item three, Glenn Hills and Parkway year-end reporting, which I have been looking forward to.
All right, good evening. Um, I, this has been a while since I presented at a board meeting, so I'm not quite sure if I'm just supposed to be speaking into the microphone or if you'd like me to stand and to present, I'm happy to do that as well.
Do what you're comfortable with, but speak into the microphone, sorry.
Then that sounds good.
I'm reporting in here. We all know that Danielle. Still laughing.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started. Um, again, good evening, we're happy to be here today to talk about something dear and dear to our heart, and that is our students, our school district, and our staff. And the wonderful celebrations, um, because there are many, and I think sometimes we don't have that opportunity to share. Uh, one of the things that we talked about as a leadership is how do we bring forth our pillars um, within our strategic plan? And align that within our school communities to showcase some of the amazing things that are taking place. Um, so when we think about our strategic pillars, um, we have the whole child, growth and success, empowered community, exceptional staff, exceptional leadership, and equitable stewardship. So Parkway School celebrates full child growth and success. Um, our caregiver and community partnerships are an integral part of increasing student achievement, engagement, and development. And what we showcase, oh, you know what, I'm realizing that I'm reading from my slides, but the slides up there have not quite changed.
Oh, I'm just trying to follow up with you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right there, okay, sorry.
So I, at Parkway, we did some wonderful celebrations. Our dear Lynn Gember, uh, former second grade teacher who retired last year came back and we honored her. Um, and in her um, wonderful spirit of kindness, we recognized three of our third grade students um, around their leadership abilities and their ability to be kind to peers and to staff at Parkway. Um, we did that at a school-wide morning meeting and it was a ton of fun. We also this year tried something new, thanks to uh, Angelo Malcolm, who put on um, an art gallery evening event in which we had families and caregivers and members within our community come out and um, enjoy all of the student artwork. Uh, the other thing that's always a huge success, and we now are in a couple of years into our camp learns more, thanks to our coaches. Uh, they put on a wonderful event around sharing the students' love of literature and reading um, and math with um, all of their families and their caregivers. Um, so that was exciting. Um, in terms of empowered community, we had our um, third, third graders and what, I'm losing it, um, what, student council members. Um, who had the opportunity to partner with some of our nursing homes within our community. And um, to share some things, not only with um, our elders within the community, but also our elders came into our schools and then wanted to recognize the students with some special tokens of appreciation. So there was definitely that reciprocal love and joy that was shared between the two groups. Um, when we think about empowered community, we think of student participation and community service as being an integral part of developing well-rounded citizens within the Glendale community. Our crew groups um, have also developed relationships with residents who live in local assisted living and nursing homes. Um, what we do on a monthly basis is we have what's called crew time at Parkway. And that's where students of all ages get together with all of the staff within the building. And so each staff has like a one to eight ratio of students, and together we participate in some amazing projects. Our last two months together, we developed cards that we shared with the residents with um, within the nursing homes within the Glendale community, and that was a lot of fun. Except exceptional staff, exceptional leadership. Our staff not only participated in professional development sessions, but oftentimes they also led the professional development sessions. Offering differentiated PD days to help increase practices, advocacy, philosophies, et cetera. Um, in this just a picture of three of Parkway staff members, it is important to note, there were so many staff who took on leadership roles, who came out and really um, did an incredible job in terms of presenting various topics um, to their fellow colleagues. And it was just really a nice time, I think that one of the comments that we've heard from many of the staff is just how enjoyable that time is to be able to come together and to learn from one another, and also seeing their peers in leadership roles and just being able to share their experiences and their teaching practices with one another. Equitable stewardship, um, this one, we wanted to just do a special shout out and thank you for the foundation and the P T O's efforts and working um, in connection with our schools and really supporting many of the various um, grant projects and um, those things that teachers have asked for that they think uh, were would be very impactful on their learning environment and working with students. Um, and I just wanted to share a letter that Ms. Malcolm uh, wrote to the foundation. Some of you may have had the opportunity to read the letter, but what it says is, I wanna say thank you so much for fulfilling my grant request for a new drying rack for the art room here at Parkway. It was put together by the awesome Mr. Conkle and dropped off today in the art room. The students already love it and are super excited to be able to use it with me, especially with the racks that that lock in place. Here is a picture of it in the art room, it made my day to receive it. Thank you for all that you do to help support what we do, sincerely, Ms. Malcolm. And I think that's really what it's about, when we think about just the reciprocal relationships that we have, not just with our organizations here within the district, but with the greater outside community as well, and there are some amazing things that we're all doing, and it's nice to be able to to showcase those. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Williams.
All right, thank you, everyone, uh, Glen Hills celebrations, we follow the same suit, uh, so we have the whole child growing success. I really wanted to highlight our Black History Program for this school year, I think that was one of our standout celebrations. And uh, a question was asked today by one of our candidates, what is something that stands out to you? And one of our teachers had to mention our Black History Program and how much of a staple it is and how excited she is every single year. Uh, I'm looking forward to putting on and seeing our Black History Program. So inside of this, I have a short video, but of course, I'm not gonna show that video because it's entirely too long. But that is one thing that we know our kids, they they love that our Black History Program and they beam with excitement and pride throughout our school. Now, throughout our building when it's uh, been.
Sorry about that.
So. Have another video, we had uh, we've got our community, uh, this year, we had the opportunity for students from Howard University to come in and show uh, show a little bit of their culture at their school and bring that and bring that to uh, Glen Hills Middle School. So we had opportunities for them to be in different classrooms, teach different students, uh, shadow different students, shadow different classes. And then at the end, they put on a presentation about their school. And so that our kids could learn about what the college experience is like for uh, some African-American students, especially at a H B C U. But I also wanted to uh, showcase uh, some of our community uh, engagements that we had, we had our our band. Had our drum line. Sorry. We had our drum. So we, we had our band led by Ms. Miracle, our drum line led by Ms. Miracle as well, in our orchestra as well. Uh, have a chance to uh, play and showcase their talents at uh, Bay Shore Town Center. And I'm getting choked up because uh, Mr. Torrance would have been there uh, to celebrate with those kids. So uh, it's just uh, this doesn't affect the school building, it reaches out into the community as well. So we're very proud of all of our kids and everything that they've worked so hard with uh, with any teacher they've had to showcase everything they've learned. I'm sorry, I'm crying, so this is something that you're probably gonna have to deal with. I'm sorry, I just, I get emotional because I'm an emotional, emotional man. But uh, exceptional staff and exceptional uh, leadership, I wanted to showcase uh, some of our coaches. And but then also show uh, some of our teachers in their, in their, in their habitat. So you can see uh, Mr. Washington arm wrestling with one of his students. And then you can also see uh, Bishop who receiving a bouquet of flowers on her birthday from one of her students as well. Um, our staff, they, they put in a lot of work every single day and they deserve to be highlighted. So um, I don't wanna take away from everything that they do every single day and how hard, how much effort they put into educating our kids. Uh, I wanted to highlight the the coaches in the middle. In a time when we were faced with so much uh, negative press, they wanted to showcase and highlight all of the great things happening in our district. So I have a picture of them because they went the extra mile and decided to form a group of educators that would put our uh, our story out there in a way that would be beneficial and broadcast all the great things going on in our district, in our school, and in our schools. So uh, I definitely wanted to commend, commend them for everything that they're doing and their advocacy around our district. And last but not least, equitable stewardship, as you can see outside, we have a wonderful green space. So shout out to Ms. Clark for growing the outdoor green space that has been utilized by staff students during the school year, uh, during after school functions. And even during the summer, I saw a family last week enjoying the environment or the atmosphere. And uh, because of her leadership, the outdoor green space has improved the reach of Glen Hills Middle School. So looking at at our facilities, what can we do to make our facilities better to the all-around community? And I believe that Ms. Clark has done that, so shout out to Ms. Clark for all she's done with the green space and how it has improved or grown and blossomed throughout the past two years. That's it.
I definitely wanna add that um, there is some Parkway video within the slideshow as well as several videos that Mr. Williams put in. So please do feel free to watch those on your own. I just think it'll bring you guys a lot of smiles to see the amazing things that our students and staff. And that will be accessible by the public, also right, when this will be as this version is uploaded.
Yes, it should be, yeah, it should be.
Hey, any visitors or non-board members who wish to comment or have any questions for Dr. Smith or Mr. Williams? Mr. Martin? Don't forget to state your name, address for the record, we'll only make you do it once.
Wade Martin, seventy-two seventy-five North Port Washington Road, apartment twelve twenty-one in Glendale, Wisconsin, five three two one seven. Hopefully, just a quick-ish question. When would a teacher say go to E-Wall and ask for permission to go out and purchase something versus going to the P T S O? Or it's like the P T S O and fundraising organizations back stuff when you'll deny something or just separate needs to get stuff?
Um, I think it's a, it's a separate additional way to be able to obtain resources and materials for their classroom setting. Um, we do encourage our teachers to come in and ask us as well. Obviously, we wanna make sure if it's something important to our staff, that will have a deep impact on student learning, that we wanna ensure that we have that in place for them.
Thanks for your question, Mr. Martin. Any board members who wish to speak? Danielle, I see you leaning in.
Yeah, well, just to clarify too, I think the foundation offers grants, but it will only cover things that would not fall into our like school budgets, right? Like regular. Um, I thought of something just at the end, well, thank you both for putting that together, it's really fun to see all of that. I imagine um, like in a couple of years, we can kind of have our dashboard up, this will be even more like data-rich, right? With like how many events and what in organizations, so I look forward to that. Um, the caregiver calendar though, Dr. Smith, that you created, that you sent, the the paper one that comes out, I think it's a really awesome addition that you're doing at Parkway because it gives uh, families and and us like a little bit more access to kind of man out and figure out how we can um, be involved. So I really liked that, uh, I mean, just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, and I just wanna clarify that um, we have an amazing culture committee at Parkway. And that was one of the projects that they've been working on.
Yeah.
Um, so I can't take any credit for it, really it's something that gathered together and formed a committee around building culture and wanting to ensure that we're keeping lines of communication open and and really building that strong partnership with families and your guests. And so I'm I'm happy that you liked it.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? All right, well, yeah, thank you, that's wonderful, declaring yourself an emotional man just fills my cup. You're happy there. Yeah, I just love all of this, um, and since Mr. Torrance came up, um, I just do wanna say to Dr. Smith, I'm grateful that you're still showing up for us. I know you have a lot on your plate and we appreciate you being here and continuing to serve our community and our students, it means a lot.
This is my happy space and my strength as well, and this is definitely my my bed.
Thank you. All right then, um, on to item four A, business office. Um, and I'll just be very transparent, my goals, my goal is for us to get through this in forty-five minutes or less.
Of all of the business offices?
Yeah, if we can, let's try to shoot for seven o'clock if we can. I know that's possibly unreasonable, but we won't know until we know. All right, so we'll start with the first item, Schumacher and Sama twenty-two twenty-three audit update. And I believe we have Diane um, coming up to the table. Thanks for being here, Diane.
Can we get her a mic or?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, and Mr. Sama is on, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, I will let you guys introduce yourselves.
Hey, I'm Diane Leidinger, I am the audit director, I was in charge of this audit.
And if you could make sure that the ovals lit up, and then you might have this microphone, it's gonna need you to be, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, it takes a little closer till you can hear yourself being loud.
Okay, my name is Diane Leidinger, I am the audit director, I was in charge of the audit for Glendale.
And I'm Mike Sama, partner with Schumacher and Sama, uh, partner overseeing our audit practice. Um, so I guess I can, I can start us off then, uh, so just as in, so, yeah.
All we can see is your forehead, just for what it's worth. Yeah, there you go, there you are.
Sorry about that. I was trying to talk into the microphone to make sure you could hear me good. So, yeah, um, just to summarize where we are with the audit, so, and just to be clear, right now, we're talking about the audit of fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and it's not finished, and the reason why it's not finished is we still have a chunk of documentation that we need that relates to the bank reconciliations for the district's bank accounts. Um, and basically that that process needs to be done for the twelve months of the fiscal year. Um, you know, the, the limited documentation we received so far, there's a large discrepancy. And the process really hasn't been performed yet. So um, you know, in discussion with um, the district, you know, what what the current plan and recommendation is, is to hire an outside accountant who can do this process. And once uh, that process is done, I'm confident that the books can be closed, and once that is done, then the audit can be finished. So um, that in a nutshell is where we currently are. And I guess um, if anyone has any questions, we can elaborate further.
Okay, that's, that's it for your update on the status of it? Okay, um, I think what we'll do is just go around the room once with board members, and then if you need to go around the room again with board members. Does that work for everyone? And I'll start with Katie, if that's okay, if you have any questions for the auditors. And if you don't, pass, it's okay. We didn't pass, and maybe I'll have a question after here's a question. Heads two rounds.
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Would you elaborate a little bit on, you mentioned the word discrepancies?
Right, I can explain that, um. Bank reconciliation should be done monthly, and what that does is compares bank activity with the general ledger activity. It's kind of like doing your personal checkbook, you prepare your register with what's clearly the bank. And right now, they don't jive. Um, the bank is actually showing more money than the general ledger showing. So we need to find out why.
Um, so it's my understanding uh, under Wisconsin statute, um, that in July, you guys should have received, like all of our documentation should have been done.
Correct.
And you should have received it all. But you did not receive it all in July, is that right?
No, well, we, we did the audit, the bulk of the audit in August.
Okay, so that's when you asked for documentation, okay. And when you didn't receive, so when that wasn't done, what was your first, like what, who did you, who did you tell, who did you?
Well, we were working with Lindsay.
Okay.
And with Ms. Manager, um, she did give us a bank rep. But it didn't match the general ledger at all.
One bank rep, I mean, I'm not sure you're talking about. Okay, but.
Well, for each account.
You want twelve, right? You want one for each month.
Because there's no way you're gonna get those done on an annual basis.
In July, right, she gave you one.
August, we received a June twenty twenty-three bank reconciliation, but it did not match the general ledger, so it was not done properly.
Was that concerning to you?
Well, not to this extent, no, because we expect to the extent we see now. That this is really a big problem.
Okay, so in August.
Back in August, we thought it was just an error we find here in our processes, including the audits.
You didn't have all the bank reconciliations though, right?
No, and we normally wouldn't necessarily look at all of them, just the June.
You would just look at June, and June wasn't done, so that was concerning.
It was not done correctly, it was not done correctly, as we were dating with and looking at other things, we would find errors in the cash.
Okay.
And we had to adjust for it. At one point, we asked for all the bank reps, and that's when we realized that she what, she didn't do them.
When did you ask for all the bank reps?
I believe it was in September.
Okay, and and she didn't have them?
No.
Okay, so at that point, are you concerned?
Yes.
Do, do you think that it may show some um, some issues with our internal control possibly or our accounting?
Yes, with internal control, for sure, yes.
Okay, um, and did you reach out to the board at that time?
No.
Did you reach out to the superintendent at that time?
I believe Alison knew about it, but I don't, I didn't talk to her directly.
Why do you think Alison knew about it?
Because I think, I thought Lindsay was talking to her.
Because Lindsay told you she was talking to her? So Lindsay said, I'm telling Alison these aren't done, but I'm gonna get them done?
She was getting other people and staff involved in it.
Do you have emails with Lindsay like that, or were those phone conversations?
I could look through my emails, a lot of them swung.
Okay. It's my understanding that uh, as auditors, that you are, like that the school board is your client. And I don't know, maybe Mike, you can speak to this. Um, and that when, so I'm curious about your process when like red flags or concerns come up. Uh, if you are not talking to anybody besides the person whom you have concerns about, um, is that standard that you would wait until you get that person to resolve the issues, complete the audit hopefully? And then you would, you would let the school board or just? complete the audit hopefully, and then you would, you would let the school board or district? Sorry, I'm just gonna finish. Could anyone let the school board or district know that there were issues? Is that like, is that standard process? Is that a normal process for you guys?
There's really not a s- set in stone way of dealing with these types of situations. I mean, I'll just say that this is not the first time where we've arrived at a district and their books weren't closed. Sometimes, uh, it's because they had staffing problems. You know, there's been a lot of that type of thing going on in the environment. So our, our natural inclination is to kind of let the district have a chance to get its act together. And, you know, as a last resort, we start talking to management and then to the board. And I don't have like, uh, you should do that in September or October. I mean, in hindsight, it's probably clear in this situation, it, it could have at least helped speed things up to tell the board in September when we found out that she hadn't reconciled anything for the entire year. But there's not, there is just a general rule that you should at some point communicate to those charged with governance. And it doesn't say specifically when. That's kind of up to the auditor's judgment, up to, uh, you know, the board, maybe if there's like a set standard with, you know, the board. So that's kind of how that works.
Uh, okay. So, uh, the agreement that we entered into with you guys is a letter of engagement, uh, for several years and it was, um, signed, uh, by Lindsay Johnson. Do you know if she was authorized to enter into that agreement with you guys? Do you know, Mike?
Uh, it was assumed that she was. Uh, we don't typically ask that question, I guess. That's, you know, usually management is authorized to enter into, into contracts. In a general sense.
Right. I mean, the statute requires that it's someone who's authorized to enter into it and past a certain point in our budget and for certain amounts, we have to authorize somebody to enter into contractual agreements. Um, and the amount of that contract, I'm not certain that she would have been authorized to do that without board approval. And I haven't found that in our meeting minutes. Doesn't mean it's, I just haven't found that yet. Um, so I just want to point that out. And I guess I'm just curious, come December fifteenth, right? That's the, that's the deadline for an audit to be submitted. Um, when we didn't meet that deadline, what did you guys do? What were you thinking about the concerning? Any red flags or concerns we're seeing with Lindsay?
Well, all through September, October, November and December, she kept saying she was working on it. She was getting other staff to work on it.
Okay.
Um, and I tried to guide her on how to go about doing it. We can give her, you know, tips and tricks type of thing, but apparently she never took any of that to heart.
Okay, um. So come December, do you tell anybody, superintendent or board, that your audit is not done and you know, that's an issue?
No, we talked to DPI.
You talked to DPI? Okay.
Look, you'll get a second chance.
Thank you. Yep. Done.
I'm not confident that this is, this is not necessarily directed to you guys, but do we have clarity about the, did we get any clarity from the party that we contracted with who is doing the work? For the reconciliations?
Clarity around that, sure, but like who's doing the work or what?
That they're done.
At this time, the bank reconciliations are not done. Um, there is clarity around the fact that probably a good starting point to those, um, would be looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two audit and starting to work forward from June that, of July of twenty twenty-two, work forward to make sure that everything is accurate and balanced about ledger. So that's work that still needs to be done and has not been completed. Yep.
Okay, uh, just a couple of follow-up questions, cause I'm, I'm an accounting, can you hear me? I'm an accounting zero. Uh, you said the, um, reconciliations, reconciliations didn't match the general ledger. The general ledger is our internal
Yes.
control.
It's your internal books.
Okay.
Like your check register and your personal.
Okay. And then you mentioned, uh, contacting DPI. Can you tell me more about that? What did that look like? Was Lindsay with you?
I contacted them somewhere.
It's just an email that we send the DPI when, you know, again, this is not completely unheard of, that sometimes districts, uh, you know, this, the financial statements have to be submitted late because of uh, things like this. And so we just send an email to DPI saying this one's not gonna be submitted. We're working with the district to try to get everything completed. That's essentially the, the communication that happens.
Do you CC anyone in the district on that?
Um, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. I might have CC'd her. Um. Usually in that situation, I think DPI usually then sends a communication to the district and to the board.
Oh, okay, so. I don't remember seeing any touches. If we had gotten a touch from that December email you sent to DPI, it probably would have been from DPI to someone in the district?
He, well, yeah, I think, and when the financial statements are going to be late, their standard process is to send a letter to the district and to the board.
I never saw anything. Okay. All right. That's good to know. That's helpful. Thank you. Um. Yeah, I, I don't even know how to, I, I just love having you here, cause I wish we could just sit and talk about this. But what I'm wondering about, my mic is going in and out. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I'm wondering about the last one. Right, same. Sorry. Yeah, okay. Since January, when everything came out, I'm trying to understand what happened with this reconciliation work, because all the way back in January, and I think Mr. Sama, Andy Franklin, who was then on the board, and I talked with you, trying to understand what's happened in five months. Right, so we can, I, I mean, we hired experts, we have people doing this work and you're, you're aware there's a problem. I'm just trying to understand where the stall was, because in five months, we still haven't finished this work. And started it as far as I know, I'm not sure, but I, I would like your perspective on where, where this ball got dropped. I, I'm not trying to stick anything to you. I'm just trying to understand, you know, a lot of people are wondering what's going on. It's just helpful to have this chance to, to hear you articulate your perspective on what's happening.
After we talked to you in January, you said you were gonna hire somebody. Um, I think the next time we talked was in March. And that's when you hired Gus and Todd. I was told at that time they were working on cash flow and the budget, so the audit would be delayed a little bit for that. Then supposedly when that was done, I would start getting the audit information. I did receive all the other information out, we were still asking for, but as far as I know, nothing on paper has been done. And nobody seems to be able to do it.
So you would have been communicating with Todd and Gus? And Alison at all? Alison what?
No. At that point, I thought she left.
Sorry, I'm taking too much time to back around. Katie?
Still just sucking on it.
Okay. Chris?
Nothing.
Anya?
Yeah, I, I was trying to remember, um, when did you come to do in-person observation?
The field work was done.
In our district. When did you come into the district to do?
We would have been here in June, probably for a couple of days, doing some preliminary work. But the main field work was, I believe, in August. I can look up the exact date.
Okay.
We went August.
Okay. What percentage of the audit is done right now? Like, if you had to quantify?
We have draft statements out there. Um, I mean, there's no opinion on it because we can't, until we have bank recs.
Okay. Well, what is that? Okay, so.
I don't know what you're saying. I mean, we.
I'm ju- so, um, I'm trying to understand. So when the bank recs are done, I mean, you have a preliminary draft that has numbers in it. And the, what's missing is your opinion on those numbers? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Well, we know those numbers are gonna change based on what we find when the bank recs are done.
Okay.
Okay. Question is, what's gonna change by and what parts will change? Don't know.
Okay.
Because of, because of the nature of the bank reconciliation process, there's a level of unpredictability that we, you know, we could find very little or we could find major things, or, or not we, but whoever does that process. So, you know, it's just, it's a little bit difficult to say, but as far as like the steps that we do in an audit, it's essentially ninety-five percent done. We just have this last piece to complete once the books are closed.
Okay. Okay, great. I understand. Thank you. And then I just want to clarify, because you've been sort of saying like, it's normal for school districts to not have their books closed, et cetera. Is it normal for one-year bank reconciliations? Have you got, have you found that before? Is that? Or is that?
Yeah, it's happened one other time that I was involved in.
Okay.
She was able to get it done within a month.
Okay. Okay.
I wouldn't say it's normal. It's not unheard of.
Well, no, because I mean, I, well, I'm trying to distinguish, cause you're saying, oh, our situation perhaps didn't alarm you because it wasn't, it's not so unusual to not have your books closed, but then.
It's unusual, but it's not unheard of.
But was our situation alarming to you? I mean, was it, was what Ms. Johnson was or was not doing?
In hindsight, it probably should have been. No, but no, it wasn't.
In the moment, it wasn't?
At the moment, it wa- wasn't. Did she, cause she kept saying she was working on it and she threw a month out there, like she was, you know, through October, it's like, great, okay. Few months done, but then it turns out she wasn't. No, it's, I feel like I was invited.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it, it's not, it's, it's not, like I said, people fall behind, that's one issue. What became clear, though, is she was incapable of doing it. And that is a bigger concern. And that concern came later in the game. You know, for a while, we just, us, we were just, it looked like she was just behind. But then it became clear that that wasn't the.
Yeah, and my, my frustration here is that I feel like you guys have to be experienced in this area. And I understand hindsight now seems like maybe, it's, it's very hard for me to conceive of you big finding out that the, the business manager is incapable of doing what you need them to do and you not going to someone in the district over them to tell them, you guys have an issue here. You just sat there and waited and kept trying to work with her. And to me, I mean, th- this isn't about, I mean, the thing about how that impacted our students and what we're dealing with now. And had we had any inclination in July, in August, in September, in December, like, there are things that we could have done to minimize some of the things that have happened. And it's, it's very frustrating. It's very upsetting for it to be so nonchalant for you guys, uh, that there was somebody incompetent in our house who, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry. It's just, it's hard for me to understand how you hold that restraint back. Um, and I understand maybe you were being lied to or manipulated too, but even the facts on their face, uh, the lack of work that was done, I don't believe that that could have, I, I, it's hard for me to just, it's hard for me to understand. That's all.
Well, you know, it, it's cause we've seen things like this happen that have resolved in a much better way than what we're seeing here. And so, you know, we've seen many different things. I mean, I've been doing this for sixteen years. Diane's been doing it for longer than that. Honestly, most of the districts we work with have been fine and do not have these type of issues. It's really just been the last few years where there's been tons of turnover. And it seems like these types of issues are becoming a little more common. But, um, you know, again, hindsight, it's much more clear as it's happening, you know, and it's not, i- i- we, we're, uh, while we're working with this district, we're also working with ten other ones. So, you know, there's a lot going on for us too. And, um, you know, it's, it's easy to, uh, focus on, you know, this type of thing, but, you know, in reality, we're having to serve eleven clients all at once. And so, you know, just trying to get, you know, and I understand from your perspective, like, you don't do audits, you don't see what goes into that. Um, it's just a lot going on in a short window of time. And so, you know, that all, that all plays into it. You know, we did, although late, we did explain to the board in January what the exact issues were. I've, I've already conceded that could have happened sooner. And, you know, I, I think, I, and I've also talked with them, you know, on the flip side, it is a two-way street and the ultimate responsibility to design a system of internal control and monitor it is on the district. And that includes board oversight. And so, we're going to be giving recommendations of how, you know, the board can have safeguards in place so that something like this couldn't happen again. You know, but we don't necessarily assume all that isn't happening off, off the bat. So, you know, we don't assume that, you know, you're not getting updates from Lindsay or asking her any of what's going on with the audit. You know, this is all what comes to light over time. So it's, it's just never as clean and easy as it feels like it should be, unfortunately.
Thank, I appreciate that. Um, Diane, just a quick follow-up. Did, did you have any other team members working with you for our district?
Yes.
How many?
Uh, well, there's three other people in that. I'd have to look back to see what was exactly out there.
So you have three people working with you?
Yes, there's four of us on the audit team.
And how many clients did you guys have?
Between the four of us, we have eleven school.
So you all manage the eleven?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you.
So moving forward, I believe that we have some plans in place to try to make sure that lines of communication are improved and more consistent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or weekly updates.
Okay. And those weekly updates are going to be directed right now toward Miss Young and, uh, either myself as the treasurer or Young, Carla?
And the two of us, right?
So the two board members and also the primary administrator. I just wanted to put it on record so that the public understands, like, moving forward, we have developed a plan of action and much stronger scrutiny, um, so that we can all start to understand better. I think, I will say as a board member, when I heard that we were ninety-five percent complete in our audit and we were just waiting for one June reconciliation, I did not envision the scope of what that meant. That's, you know, to me, those words mean a very small item. So.
It's a small item for us, but unfortunately, it can be a very big item for the district who has to do the work. Once the work is done, us double checking that it's correct does go pretty quickly, as long as it's all done correctly.
Sure, but to our point, our oversight, because we, I, because I couldn't fully understand, and it's, I'm not putting this on you guys at all. I'm just saying, like, my understanding of, of that discussion was very different from what it actually is. And so then the question that might naturally follow, had I understood the scope of the issue, um, it didn't occur to me to ask, right?
Sure.
Not you guys, that's just.
Okay, we've had our two rounds. My mic is still broken. Um, that's okay. Um, Mike, I appreciate the, the poke on board oversight. And we're gonna work on that. We're gonna look forward to your recommendations on how to make sure that we are able to um, engage in that oversight. Um, it's always a
Improve our engagement.
Right, right. Yes, we do have practices and we've been asking at every board meeting for five months, which you haven't been at, as we try to figure it out. It's always a balance for our school board because, um, we're often pushed into our lengths, right? Um, if we have a lot of experts and staff we've hired, we're not only expecting them to do the work, but also being reminded to keep, keep our hands off so the work can be done. So, as you know, there's always that push and pull, that kind of, um, gray zone where we're trying
So as you know, there's always that push and pull, that kind of, um, gray zone where we're trying to manage. Where do we get engaged? And expedite the process versus where do we get engaged and stall the process? So we're gonna look forward to working with you to help us, uh, understand better. Uh, and improve our practices. So. On that note, anything else? Anna?
Okay, I actually have, oh, Katie. Um, just not specific to the situation, but is there a flag that would be read enough where you would notify us immediately? Like, would there be something you saw that was concerning enough that you would either notify us with the superintendent?
Yes, if there was fraud.
Fraud. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. Thanks for coming in person, Diane. I appreciate that too. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Onto item, the next item on our business agenda, which is the update from Gus about the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
Okay.
Well, I, I have five minutes.
No, no, no.
Then there's the questions.
It's okay if we go a little.
Okay, um, what I gave you is something that I have, that I have done in the past. Uh, taking a look at revenue expenses from the previous year, looking at revenue expenses for the. Projected for the future year, looking tax levy, uh, at this point in time. When you, the, the twenty-three, twenty.
Gus, what are you referencing right now? What, I don't know what, what you gave us. What are you talking about?
Did I, did that document get forwarded to them?
What is that? I can't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
They sent it this morning and.
Oh, so it would be in the agenda then? It's too late to land that. If we want to vote.
Nope, it, it's in regards to this item. It's just the, the working document.
Okay. Jennifer? Need to just go ahead and send it to you?
No.
I'm sorry. You want me to pull up documents?
Want to send it projected, Brian?
That's fine. Yes, if she can, if she can.
I think it is emailed you.
Yes. While we're working on this, can, can we do a follow-up to the last one with Gus? Or I just, I don't.
Do you have a question for Gus about the audit?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm okay with that. Everyone okay with that while we're ready? Please?
It, yeah. I just want to know where we, I, I, I'm still not clear what the plan is moving forward. Like, we know it's not, yeah, I.
I think Anna can speak to it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so right now I've been working with Baird to identify an accountant who can help support, um, the reconciliation. And to focus and hone in on just closing out and reconciling those bank accounts, right? So, and being able to enter those into Skyward, which is our accounting system. Um, so a plan has been developed and we are going to discuss that as part of our to-do items later in our board meeting. In terms of how the board would like to proceed with that approach.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Last follow-up about the bank recs. Can you give us an idea of what has happened such that in five months, the bank recs have not gotten? Like, we're almost to the end of the tenure of your contract and Todd's contract. And the bank recs are not done, have not been started, is sort of my understanding. Can you speak to that?
I can tell you what I know. Uh, when I was hired, I was hired to run the office and do the budget.
Okay.
Things like that. I was told that Dr. Gray was going to be handling the audit.
Okay.
Uh, what I do know is.
I think he's, oh. Oh, there he is. Oh, okay. So Todd's area.
Yes, yes, I'm here. I can, and I'll tell you where I'm at. I have handled the audit except for bank recs mostly because. The recs have to be done in the Skyward system and I made it very clear that I wasn't a Skyward person. Um, we did get, we did, we got CISA five in here. We got Mike Weaver from, uh, Nextdoor. Uh, we got Ben Prather who not, unfortunately couldn't work out along, but all those folks were very frustrated by the fact that. Nothing had been done in the system and there was no hard copies. We could not, and, and Gus, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could find no. Hard copies or any work that had been done on those reconciliations. So we were kind of flying blind and. We did the best we could to find what we could. Um, I was hoping that with the auditors, we could just get a, a June of two thousand. Twenty-three reconciliation and we'd be good, but apparently they, they wanted all twelve months. So. Um, the, the issue again is the, the debt, those recs have to be done in the system. They cannot be done manually and then put in a file which the. File would have disappeared. So there was nothing to go on. It, it was very frustrating.
But, but you kept telling us it would only be a couple of weeks. That's why I'm so frustrated. We kept asking what resources? And you said you didn't need any.
Uh, well, it, we, we had people come in and they, they were not able to find the information as well. I mean, I'm still, I'm still trying to find someone that could come in and do that work. I'm not giving up on it. Um, it's just, we, we had someone in a week ago and then he up and took another job. Um, but even he was frustrated with the fact that there was no, no information out there. But like I said, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm not a Skyward person. Um, I haven't done that particular software for years. Um, certainly I know how to do bank recs, but that doesn't do, do us any good if we can't get the information into the system. And, and if the information isn't there. And we, we found no hard copies of literally anything. Um, in that office.
Chris?
Uh, I have a question for Dr. Gray. Um. You know, we are looking to hire an accountant to do the bank reconciliations. In your opinion, do we have enough information for them to work with?
I, I, I don't know. Um, I, I just don't know what's missing out there. Um, if they're going to have to go back to July of two thousand twenty-two. Um, a, a, again, I, we just don't know where a lot of the files are or where the information is that would support a bank rec. Um, one of my thoughts is by, by this time, by June of two thousand twenty-three. Some of those reconciliation items would have cleared themselves, but, um, there are still adjustments that would have to be made into the system. Now, I have also been keeping up with, uh, Mark Elworthy at, at, uh, DPI pretty much on a weekly basis. Uh, letting him know that we're still trying to crank this out. Um, he has accepted the draft, you know, to use his numbers to calculate, uh, state aids and so on, but, um. You know, once, once I find the magic bullet on how to get those reconciliations done with literally no information, then, then we'll be done.
Um, so just to clarify, in order to reconcile the account, you would need access to the accounts and you need the prior bank statements. As well as any of our payroll statements and our list statements, correct?
Right, and there, there are, there are banks, bank statements are easier to get. You get it from the bank. I believe there's a PDF copy of those around. But it's, it's the adjustments, the differences between what the, the bank statement says and what the ledger says. Um, and that's where, you know, so, someone would have had to have some kind of documentation somewhere. I mean, it, it may still be able to be done, but it's just going to take a long time.
Right.
The last individual that, that knew the system that I had in there said it's gonna, he, he was thinking about, it's gonna take him eight hours to do one month of. Um, reconciliation.
You can see the issue is, is that there is, if there's deposits and things like that, it's not something I explained it. I have this severe frustration with everything else I'm trying to do. Is there's no paperwork that, that backs out what you can read on the bank statement. I'm used to the fact that in the district I was in, whenever we made a deposit, we had exactly what was all. What that money was for, where it went, different things like that. There was. Uh, copies of, of checks that were deposited, everything like that. We had journal entries for state aid payments, uh, things like that. Todd, what Dr. Gray's saying is we can't find any of that. And so we can, we can do that, but when the bank statement doesn't mi- match what's in Skyward. That's where we're running into problems trying to figure out why it's, why is there that difference? A paperwork would be able to give us quickly where that difference is.
There, there are also, there are things on the bank statement, you know, let's say revenues on the bank statement that. May not have been entered into the Skyward system for months later. And, and that's the kind of tracking you need to do. And if, if you have some hard copy or some files or something that, that. Where, where you've noted that that's went in, um, it's much easier to, to track, but again, it, that information is just not available.
So I thought, I'm not trying to be obnoxious here, but I, that's why we hired you to do that and then we.
Well, I, I, I said I would help with the audit, but I don't, I don't, I made it very clear to Allison and others that I, I'm not able to do. The bank recs in Skyward. I don't do Skyward. That's why I had other people. I had CISA five. That's why the other people in here are helping with that.
So it is, it is possible from my understanding, and I just want to make sure that I have clarity that although it's a laborious process and it's going to take time. And it's tedious, it is work that can be done. Um, and pulling the bank statements into, um, files in order to be able to expedite that process. Is work that we can do and, and if we have somebody who is devoted to that, that it is work that can get completed and close out the audit.
I, I believe that's the case. I mean, it's going to take some serious digging.
Yeah.
And it's going to have someone that, that knows how to, um, you know, work Skyward and is able to make the appropriate adjustments in Skyward. To, to prior periods and those types of things.
Okay, I think we can come back to this in the to-do when Anna can talk a little bit about her plans going forward. Um, that, sorry, I hit my hand up a little bit.
Oh.
I just, it's just two, two things I'm thinking, um. I'm, I mean, uh, several months ago, we asked if, uh, we could speak with Lindsay herself. And get her in or if that might be helpful to have her come and explain what was going on. And I'm, has, has anybody actually reached out to Lindsay to ask her questions about what she did or didn't do? That was Todd, I guess, that was me talking about that specifically.
Right, no, I, I had, I had recommended that you bring her in at least just to finish up the bank recs. Because she would have had some of the knowledge of, of, of where the, where the items were, what wasn't recorded properly and so on. But, um, I, that, that wasn't able to be worked out.
It's the fact that you guys have found so little evidence of work that she did. My, the, the main question going off in my head is that are we no longer talking about competence? Are we talking about such extreme like negligence that we should be looking into, uh, liability? I know that she would have liability through the district, but I, I mean, I don't even know, this sounds like the highest level of. I, I guess I'm just curious if we, if that is something we should be thinking about. In your opinion.
Well, I just don't think she was, yeah. She shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been in the position, I guess. I mean, that's, that's hindsight. But, um, I think early on when you saw that things were missing. Reports were missing, you know, that, that might have been an indication. And, and maybe that's why. I, you know, she didn't do this stuff because she just either didn't know how or thought it would. Be cleared up somehow, or maybe thought the auditors would do the reconciliations, but, um. I mean, a lot of the other stuff too. I mean, like I said, I had a list of about twenty-five things that I cleared off. And everything is generally cleared off except for the bank recs.
Okay, I, my last thing, sorry. Um, and when did you both realize that you were these bank recs? Or was there a moment where you realized the bank recs were not going to be able to be done by either of you? And that we needed, we need to bring someone else in?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we, that was back in. The, this last spring is when we, we, first we pulled in CISA five. Uh, not only to help with the bank recs, but also to tra- train, uh, the district accountant on doing some of that. Um, that didn't work as well. We met with, um. Uh, Tim Joint and Mike Weaver from Nextdoor to see if there was something we could work out and that was. Um, that had been going forward and then, then Mike obviously, uh, went on maternity leave. Then I brought in a young man by the name of Ben Prather, who is a, who is a licensed business manager. Um, who was between jobs. Um, and he, he began working on it and I, I called him when he was here working on it. He said he was also frustrated because nothing was ever done in the system. Nothing was in there. He couldn't track anything. Um, and so he, he made some, some adjusting journal entries where he could, but he just, he had the same frustration.
I, we, we met with, I, we were with Benjamin Prather. The issue for him, as I understood it, was he couldn't get the work done in two weeks. And that's an individual, like a week ago, right?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Card. So just to summarize, what I believe you're letting us know is that there had been ongoing efforts to identify someone. Do the work. We never, we never were able to successfully, so CISA five, from my understanding is they did not have. The capacity to meet our needs. And so then we moved on to.
Right.
Story, I think you mean like a local, another district who is going to help with our accountant to understand how to do the job. And they also didn't have the capacity to meet our needs.
Yeah, I know if I call it the capacity, but just they, they didn't, weren't able to figure out what was going on. So. But yeah, maybe you call it capacity, the time, whatever, but, um, they weren't able to figure out what was going on without any, any other information out there. But like I said, I'm not, I'm not done. I mean, I've been trying to find someone. I'm continuing to look for someone who can do Skyward. Uh, along with the bank rec. Bank rec part isn't hard. It's, it's making sure that it's fitting in Skyward. And when you see an entry that was put into Skyward very late, as opposed to want to trip that knowing how to make those adjustments.
Okay, let's go back to Gus.
Okay.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay.
Document is labeled twenty-four, twenty-five budget information. It's on an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, I, have you guys found it on your computers? Yes, okay. I've got it in front of me.
Yeah. Okay. This is a format I've used in the past to summarize, uh, at this point, I will go through where we're at. The twenty-three, twenty-four numbers are from the adjusted budget that you approved. That Todd had, that Dr. Gray had worked on and you approved and, and we, and you put that on our website and things like that. That is the adjusted budget there of, uh. So those numbers are from there. The deficit that is projected based on that budget is a three-point-five billion dollar budget. Twenty-four, twenty-five right now is, uh. That is done with work with Baird and estimating exactly where we think numbers will be. Uh, we, I know for certain, like on expenses, uh. The projection here was to present a worst-case scenario in revenue. Uh. A worst-case scenario on expenses, a deficit, uh. Deficit is going to, that's going to be the worst the deficit is going to be. Uh, to continue to work, for example, we have found, uh. We started, as I started going through it again, I'm telling you, my frustration is right now, and I've never had to do this before. I'm going through every line of the budget that. Was produced and going through and looking at each item and each expense that was there to try to figure out where money was put. Uh, are these legitimate expenses? Are the expenses that we can be cut? Uh, things like that, because again, there's no documentation as to what. Uh, things like that, because again, there's no documentation as to what was. So I'm going line by line through Skyward and looking at, at bills that we've paid, uh, that is. Tedious, but, but through that already, we have found sixty thousand, or. Eighty thousand dollars in expenses that are, that are going to be cut, that are not reflective of the twenty-four, twenty, twenty thousand, four, twenty-six, three, sixty-three. I intend that we will find more. What I'm telling you is, is that two points six is the worst-case scenario. The deficit. I anticipate, uh, revenue will go up, I anticipate expenses will go down. What we don't know, for example, in the revenue. We are now taking the summer academy and running it through summer school. Running the summer academy there will increase. Our enrollment numbers that are used for revenue control. Revenue control should be going up, but we will not know that until the fall. I did not factor that into this. As I'm doing this budget and doing all the detail, I have not factored that in because I don't know what, what amount that's gonna be. At my attitude in doing budgets is always be as conservative as possible. In July, I'd like to have the worst-case scenario. So that as you move forward or you can, you, you as a board and administration would look and say, okay, things aren't as bad as what we thought they were. You can present a, a positive thing as you go forward. There are. Other things that. That we're looking at. Uh, for example, um. And I have not had a chance to sit down and get to the great detail, but, but we can take our athletic program. That is sitting in the general fund. And by statute, because of the fact that we open our athletic program to any homeschool or private school. Student, we can move that to Fund eighty, the community service fund. That will have major impact, that will have again, some more impact on that expense number. Expense number right now at twenty-four, twenty, twenty million, four, twenty-six, three, sixty-three reflects that athletics is still in the general fund. But we can move some of. We believe, uh, I shouldn't say we believe, I've been other districts that have done that, so that's. Not an issue, but again, it will save us some, some money in the general fund and help on the deficit. The other thing you need to be aware of on this is with the. Uh, Friday is supposedly the approval of the six million dollar loan by the state. That six million will not only cover the deficit for this year, but at least give you. Probably cover the deficit of last year, this year, but it'll also give you some fund balance. Uh, that you'll have, so this more than, than six million will more than cover you shouldn't be into any issue there. On that, uh. The other thing I've. Michelle, the new business manager? Her and I, we, we've had a conversation, we're gonna continue to have a conversation, um. Another issue that I need and want to make sure that she would be comfortable with is. There is the possibility this year with some of our grants, it appears. From what I can tell, at least on the expense side, and we'll talk about that in a minute, we talked about bills and everything like that. It appears that we are going to be. At least a couple percentage points below the budgeted expense of twenty million, six oh eight. Ninety-eight seven, so the deficit is not going to be as severe as the, as what's budgeted as three, three five. What I want to talk to her about, if you're trying to meet, you know, this week or next week. Is, okay, do we hold back on some of our grants? Title one flows, these things like that, not claim the entire amount this year. And be able to carry some of that money over next year to again, when it enhances the revenue. And have an impact on that, on that deficit. So there's some strategy now as to how do we, as we get closer here and starting to see things come together, how do we? How do we strategize? But those types of things that would have an impact, especially in grants and things like that, they're gonna have an impact in twenty-four, twenty-five. Before I do anything budgetarily, I, I will have claims ready, claim the whole thing, I'll have claims to claim part of it. But I want to talk to her and make sure that, that she's okay with things. I mean, she's got to run twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, and I want to make sure that I will go in the direction that she wants to go. Uh, in moving that, but those are things that will have some impact on the. On the revenue, on the expenses, uh. Obviously, as we go forward, another thing is, again, that's the worst-case scenario. Obviously, as we lose, as some staff may, may leave, we usually, every district usually picks up. Savings and expenses on staff replacement. And to do that and we are aware of that and go forward there, uh. So this is, again, this is where we're projecting, these are the numbers that, that we look at. In revenue, the intention is, the hope is that it's gonna be greater than seventeen, seven ninety-five, eight oh two expenses, they hope. And, and the expectation is maybe lower than twenty million, four, twenty-six. B six three, those are the benchmarks that are out there, those are the targets that we are now shooting as we, as we finalize. I finalized, uh, putting the budget together. Obviously, the impact on, one of the impacts on that is property taxes. And what's going to, what could conceivably happen with property taxes? And one of the things as I look at property tax is, I'm looking and saying. I know that there is. More likely a referendum in November. That could ultimately have an impact on property taxes. So what can, what can be done with property taxes right now to try to soften the blow? Try to ease the impact of a referendum. Goal is trying to get the property tax levy. As low as we conceivably can get it to be. So you can see there that I, the general fund. See the increase in the general fund, that increase is basically due to, you know, slight increase in revenue control. Uh, assuming state aid is, is gonna be pretty, pretty constant. That service goes up because you will be paying the interest. Uh, in twenty-four, twenty-five, you're paying the interest payment on the six million dollar loan. Uh, the community service, I still have some question on that. It looked. Up with Baird and historically in the past, they've already taxed somewhere in there in the, in the five hundred and fifty thousand. I'm thinking this year you taxed so heavily in community service. And we didn't use much. We ended up, we did have to, in the past two weeks, we had to replace the breaker box. In Good Hope School because the insurance company would not issue property insurance. We had a fuse box in there, they wanted a breaker box and they were not going to issue insurance for the building.
There were still fuses?
So we replaced that, so there, we took a little expense out, but there, there is. Plenty there and as I look, I'm on, as we, if we move the athletics over to community service, stuff like that. I'm thinking that the five fifty-one, I would be shocked if. A final number would be anywhere close to five fifty-one, oh, five, five. I think that number can end up being lower, but right now it's like, okay, we will plan for this until we. Because I haven't touched Fund eighty yet, I'm working on Fund ten, entering Fund ten information. I haven't gotten the eighty yet. To do that, so I'm thinking that that could go down, but the bottom line is on all of this is. That the levy is lower right now, in a worst-case scenario, is lower than it was a year ago. And you can see the impact on the equalized value. I never, at this point in time, I never guesstimate how much it equalized. Aid is, or it equalized value is gonna go up. So I take last year's amount. We know that property value will go up. The tax levy stays the same, the mill rate would end up going, will still end up going down. From this five seventy-nine. That's just the math of, of how we do that. Uh, but that's where we're looking at the taxes. And I would like that number, you know, more if we could, but we do pick up. About eight hundred thousand dollars. That. Reduces the impact, obviously, the eight hundred thousand would reduce the impact of a referendum. Uh, on the taxpayer, uh, when we do that, uh. Now, there are, there are dates, uh, that this will end up getting modified. First date is July first of this summer. DPI releases a estimate of state aid. Now, we've been told. That that estimate may not be worth anything because of the situation in Milwaukee. Because Milwaukee's the big driver when you calculate state aid. They have a pool of money and they divide it up based on a bunch of factors and they don't have. We have, and I know someone asked, we have our information, and you heard Dr. Gray say that, our information is at DPI, DPI is accepting our information. We are in the same issue as Milwaukee. I have not received a single phone call, I have not received a single letter about threatening to cut off. Any, any funding and we've gotten our funding in June. Uh, every, everything that we're supposed to get in June, we, we've gotten it, it's on the, called the aid register. Easily show everyone that it's there, it's, I'm not, uh. I'm not, I'm not blowing smoke, um. It's there and stuff like that. So July first could have some impact a little on property taxes, we don't worry that much about it. August fifteenth. But we, you know, get a general idea. I calculated based on that, August fifteenth, the Department of Revenue releases the property values. The equalized property values to the municipalities. Now, it's easy, if I understand right, and someone's gonna have to help me activate the geography. All of Glendale is in the Glendale School District, correct? So we, so we'll know exactly what Glendale's property value is, uh. What's the other, Indian Hills? River Hills. Well, we will own, you know, we'll see what their property value is, we, what I usually do is take a percentage, whatever percentage that. A municipality is in my district, I take that percentage and, and calculate that, so you'll have a general idea of what the increase might look like. In property value. And this year especially, that will be important as you look at. Referendum and start trying to sell a, a referendum. The major dates are October first. That is when the, when the Department of Revenue releases to the school districts their actual property value based on. So we would get the property value. Of, of the partial municipality that's in our district, we would get that October first, and then you'll know exactly where you're going to be. And then October fifteenth. You get the, uh. Your revenue control number from DPI. And you get the, uh. And you get your equalized aid. The revenue control number in Oc- on October fifteenth will include. Your enrollment on the. Third Friday in September and will include your summer school enrollment. Both of those will be, will be in there. And that's when I anticipate that your revenue control number will go, will go up. Because you'll have that summer school and you'll have that, that factual number in there. So those are key dates as you go, as you go forward, um. Again, we were, we're. Finalizing things, we just, we finished up, uh, we could still go open enrollment in health insurance, so I'm making the adjustments of those people. Uh, again, there's smaller ones, we had a handful of people who either. One of the three things gonna happen, they either drop, or four things. Either drop their insurance, they switch from single to family, from family to single. Or we had a couple, a couple people now who are going to take health insurance. Uh, because they hit the magic number of twenty-six. And they. And they can't be on mom and dads anymore. Uh, and so we have that, that, that's a new occurrence, that, that occurs every year, you will pick up a couple teenagers who will do that. And you do that, so we're making those adjustments there, um. Because again, part of this is, let's get, we know what the insurance is gonna be, let's get the right numbers in and, and go from there on the health insurance and, uh. Get all of that, uh, finalized, uh, on that. So I wanted to give you this overview of this, like I said, these are the targets, this is the stuff that you're looking at, these are the things you hang on to. Or when I bring a final or whether it's me or, or. So whatever, a final budget comes, you'll, you'll be able to see these targets and then you have these targets and you can say, okay. What reason, if, if we miss them, if I'm lower, if a, if the final one is lower on revenue. If the final one is higher on expenses, the general fund, that's when you start asking questions as to why. But I want to give you this, this target information so you have this, so you're prepared to, to, uh. Move forward with this and to give you an idea in regards against the property tax. Then I'm going through the individual expenses and going through there, I will also be meeting with, um. Uh, some of this outside expenses, you know. Principals and ministers have been tremendously, given me budgets, we sat down, we worked on that, that's, that's all gonna be fine. There's all the outside things that I'm now looking at. Till these things like that and part of, in getting all that information, part of it is that, uh. Also want to meet with Michelle and say, okay, here's where the account numbers that this stuff was in, where were you? And as I've started to look. Account numbers. The odd account number that I would have used. Now, that these are recorded, but it's not. An easy process of finding and working with, I want to make sure that as I, if I move anything again, that, that she's fully aware of where I put the money. So that she doesn't have the same, same issues next year that I had when I walked in here as to. What does this all mean? Where is this, where do I get, where do I pay this bill from, whatever, she's fully aware, I'm trying to make that. Run as smooth as, as possible because it is. The process is not. Uh, this obvious way, point blank. It's not the way I would have set up a budget. I'm not saying that there's things missing, it's just, I just need to make sure I have everything covered. And with the account numbers that are there, that she's used, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, except by holding line by line to make sure I got everything covered. Last thing I want to do is have some major surprise show up next year. I just do not have my ears ringing. Over in the western part of the state because, you mean, he forgot that number. You mean, he left something out.
Okay, thank you, Gus, um. I forgot to ask for visitor participation during the auditor, someone start with that. Would any visitors like to? Comment about, um, what Gus has been talking about? Mr. Martin?
First, I want to say thank you for doing all that work. Trying to find out what still needs to be done and trying to actually verify since they're actually legitimate, going to the right place, which. Just for context, since. Seems more some humble than he's actually letting on, that it's a ton of work and going through and verifying every simple thing. It's coded to the correct place without having any fiscal backup, that's. Seeing a check come out for thirteen hundred dollars, it's coded to, say, we energies, but you have no actual proof, it's going to be energy, so he has to. Go and check every single place. What those expenses are, so could I say, thank you for doing that, it's not fun, not easy, but. Thank you for doing that. Also, on the list of things to potentially do with the auditors going. Also, on the list of things to potentially do with the auditors going forward is just have them in standard practice, carbon copy the board members on communications. It's just that way if, say, I doubt he would, but say he's lying to you about something else. You have a record, say, really, he's lying to you, which I don't think he is, but good data. And also, just for context on how much work bank reconciliation is for after the fact stuff, not necessarily what he's doing, but after the fact verifying things, that's like ninety percent of the work for after the fact stuff. It's five percent for the auditors. It's substantially all of the work for you all. And since he's doing the work for coding, that's probably like ninety-five percent of the work.
Is Skyward compatible with DPI's format? I don't know a lot yet to get sure there.
Yeah, Skyward is used by, oh my gosh, a couple hundred districts in the state. So DPI, but DPI makes changes in their accounting system. Skyward is, there's about two or three that are major software things that in, in the state. And they will meet with those software providers, let them know the changes that they, that they intend to make so that those software providers can make the changes for us in the school district. Yeah, so there, there's great communication between DPI and those software things. Milwaukee is unique because it utilizes its own software that no one else has.
Thankfully, you all don't have that heavy. And then it was mentioned that all of the bank reconciliations need to be done from July onward, which I don't, whoever has to do that, but you have an actual starting point that is solid, you know, or?
Well, the actual starting point would be June of twenty twenty-two.
June of, June of twenty twenty-two is solid. So that audit, the twenty-one, twenty-two audit is complete. So there's a good starting point in, in that area. Thanks, Mr. Martin. Few things that I just want to ask. This document we.
All right, you do that. I mean, I just, there's one thing I wrote down here and I forgot to mention. We trying to finalize any expenses from the utilities and things like that. The other thing I want to give you a heads up on is in funded eighty, where you asked that question about, you know, we talked about the good old school. Even based on, on the revenue that I've seen, you know, updating the contracts, I do not see how that cannot be profitable.
Say that again? You say that in a, in a huge change of phrase.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this. As I look at the good old school and the whole rental process, I believe that our revenue, even with the old rates without that our revenue will be greater than our expenses at good hope for that building.
If you continue to defer maintenance.
Well, and that we will, that we will be able to start to build a balance in funded eighty that could be used for major maintenance. You can even conceivably use.
We have a balance, don't we?
Well, we, and we definitely have a balance now, but I think even on a yearly basis, you would, you would be able to get a balance that you could set aside for future maintenance. Major maintenance.
You shared like what?
I'm, I'm still.
I want to, we're, we're going long and I want to stay focused on the update on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, that twenty.
I don't, I don't want to get sidetracked by the big good hope question where I think that's a separate topic where we need to, the leases and there's kind of.
Yeah, there's a lot of things there. I'm just trying to say that I believe when we get the funded eighty budget done, you will see that revenue, that the good whole portion revenue will be greater than expenses funded.
But to clarify, that budget has not been worked.
We have not.
Not done, so that's speculative. Thank you.
Based on what I have seen so far.
Thank you. Okay, so this document we've been looking at was not on board docs because it came in too late. Now that we've discussed it, can we, can we add it to board docs? So that someone who is separate. All right, so let's add that to the public content. I, I wanted to have a caption making clear, this is not the typical preliminary budget that the board votes on, right? Typically, we would get a bu- budget in June that would be an official preliminary budget that we would vote on. But that's gonna be delayed until July now, right, Anna? Yeah, we're gonna be doing that in July with Michelle because this is not an official preliminary budget. So I just want to make that clear for you all. We have nothing to vote on today. And so, Anna, when, when you add this to the board docs, maybe we can be sure to put that big caveat on it. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that you made a passing comment about trying to sell a referendum. It doesn't seem perfectly clear. We are not allowed to sell a referendum. We're not allowed to expend any public funds to advocate for or against a referendum as board members or, or anyone in the district. We are only allowed to put it on the ballot. So just to be clear on that. So we all understand our obligations under law.
I, I said I, it was a bad choice of words.
I know, you know, but just so that we all know. Okay, so understanding the limits of what we're looking at, that this is not an official preliminary budget. This is based on some preliminary work. Any board members have questions or comments for Gus? I see Chris's hand up.
I just wonder if there are any implications of starting a new fiscal year without a board approved budget?
The in while I worked in common school districts my entire career, the issue that you had in the common school district is the tax levy, tax levy itself, which drives the budget, is officially approved by the taxpayer at the annual meeting, which are usually held in August or now September, even later than that. So people, so budgets were going forward. Some districts were finalized, forwards were finalized, budgets till July or August for that because they wanted to wait as long as possible. I understand here you have a budget hearing. But technically, the budget hearing is the formal approval. You get to the budget hearing, you're formally approved at the budget hearing. He was born to, that that's when it, that's when it becomes official.
So Gus, just to clarify for everybody, what you're saying is that our official budget is passed in October because of the type of school district we are?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's very typical for us to be entering a new fiscal year without an approved budget. Well, usually we don't have an approved preliminary budget, but here we don't have to act. If it were a problem hypothetically, we're gonna correct it in July. Thank you for that question.
And basically, I would tell you, the only thing that's going to be expended will be that at least during my tenure, while I'm still here, that I'm authorizing would be schools, would be supplies for classrooms. Anything that's gonna be a big item, if something a big came up, I'm, I'm bringing my practical stories. I already brought it to the board until the budget was approved. And if it had been in the budget, once you approved the budget, then I wouldn't necessarily bring those. But until the budget is formally approved, any big item would be brought forward.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
We're still gonna talk about the expenses, check register.
Yeah, that's next when we're done with this.
Can I have a question for you, Carl?
Yeah.
The, or, or Anna, sorry. The preliminary budget being done in July, so the preliminary budget would not be contingent upon our audit being complete?
We would be not necessarily, so you're looking at your projected revenues that are coming in and that's why it's a preliminary budget, right? So typically, an audit cycle would close out, like they were talking about last year, and closes out in August, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we're behind, right? So the way that this, the way that the lag in the, in auditing is giving us an issue is that we won't have clarity specifically on twenty-three, twenty-four, this fiscal year, until we have clarity on twenty-two, twenty-three and have a closed out audit. So there is a backlog impact on our ability to project, which is going to be, I think, some of the issues that you're encountering right now is to get at that. There is information that Gus has presented to you tonight that is enough to begin to build out a budget. And we know what we're spending on a yearly basis. I know, you know, as Gus is working through this as somebody not from the outside, when I look at a lot of the expenditures in from the buildings as well as from curriculum instruction and special education, like we keep pretty good reference on what we're utilizing. So we are able to piece that together with and support Gus in that work. So I think some of the outside things he's looking at are some of those other expenditures like around, you know, internet, phone, gas, lightnings. You know, those kind of more support pieces. So the, that capacity is there to build it out and have a preliminary budget, which is best practice. So we want to get to that as quickly as possible.
The, the other thing with, with what's, audit not being done, what they're waiting for, the major impact on that stuff is on the balance sheet of the school district, not their revenue and expenses. Because we're looking at cash, we're looking at balance sheet. So the impact of not having it done is, and we've done some good estimating work with Baird and stuff, but part of this is cash will have an impact on, on balance. And right now, when you're talking about a deficit, part of this is, is do we have, you know, the key thing there is do we have enough money to cover expenses in twenty-four, twenty-five, to continue to be payable and things like that? So what's missing is not having a, a huge impact on revenue and expenses. But it will have an impact on the balance sheet for those understand accounting and, and, you know, the position of the district. So it's more, more, we've had to work harder and we have done that in regards to cash flow. That's why we, we had Baird here. That's why we're getting the loan this week, things like that, to handle the cash flow. Those were the missing pieces that not having the audit done right now caused us to have to do.
Okay. Good. Onward, and we do have school perceptions very patiently waiting. So let's move as quickly as we can through main expenses, checks and revenue. Back to you, Gus.
Yep. Let me take the, let me take the revenue piece first because there's not, there's nothing to show in revenue because we, but we're getting going on that of making journal entries, doing the things that need to be, to be done to start showing revenue. The biggest thing on, on revenue and fund ten is property taxes, which we know will come in and everything that we get from the state or federal government. And so we have a pretty good idea, you know, we'll have a pretty good idea of where we stand and right now where we'll be on that. So not as worried about that. The expenses, again, we have, if we look at the expenses, I would tell you that the total salaries, employee benefits are, are up to date. We know of those. Purchase services, we have a majority of those in because we've entered the credit card things, the non-capital objects. Year-to-date activity, we have, again, a majority of those entered. Capital objects, the same thing. That retirement, we're missing the interest payment that we made on short-term borrowing in April because we need to journalize that. We'll get that when we do the other with the other kernel entries. Insurance and judgments, that was the school district insurance, property, auto, all those things have been paid and recorded. So that, I don't have any problem there. The other financing sources, there would be in regards to, we have to, and we have to, there's nothing missing there while it, while it's blank there. The two things that occur there are open enrollment in, or I'm sorry, open enrollment out. We, that's an expense to the district, the amount of money that we have to pay for open enrollment out. And then the transfer to special education to cover the portion of special education that they, that grants and stuff like that don't cover. Number one, we just got information, just came this week. I've seen the reconciliation from DPI in regards to open enrollment out. So that just came this week. And the transfer will not probably occur, transferred to special ed in any given year, regardless of what's going on, would probably not occur until the first week in July. Because we have to wait to see what all, what grants, what amount of all our grants that we're submitting. Handicap aid stuff has come in now in, in June, but we're looking for anything, anything else that might come in. And then we know what the deficit is. So under the other financing sources, one should not be alarmed at all that that's a zero in May. We will not, you know, we will not, don't know that at, at the end of May, we didn't know what that was.
That is a good question, sorry.
Yeah.
It, it sounds like you're explaining these to us and saying that they are not exactly accurate, that some, like, it's not, is that right? Like, some things aren't in, some, et cetera. And so I'm wondering if there is benefit in just like maybe putting a caveat on these documents to say these are not quite accurate, but maybe not walking through them. So that, like, I want to make sure that in board docs, they're reflected that way. And then perhaps understanding them what they're.
Thanks, Danielle, because we know that the revenue and expenses reports grow out of Skyward and therefore are inaccurate. I think tonight, all we're gonna be asked to approve is the check register.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to go through this just to give you an idea of where we, because I know you've had questions about what's in, what's not in, things like that. And I just wanted to go through line by line and just explain. And again, certain items, there is nothing in May, right, at the end of May, and just explain that some of these items will be lingering till, till June. And that is, that is normal in every school district. No matter you got everything completely in or, or it's probably like we are the so that's not the, that eight hundred number, other financing sources is not a number for anyone to panic over right now.
Okay, thanks, Gus. Any visitor comments? Mr. Martin?
Hopefully, what questions? For the check register, just as a member of public, when would some of them be redacted? Just like individual personal information?
Yeah, I can answer that. So that would be it saying, sometimes there is an item where we might make a payment, say, to a private school. For, well, I know, not to a private school, but to a placement. No?
There are instances in which we do reimbursement for transportation to families as a means to provide cost. And so family names would be identifiable, so we redact them.
Aren't there ever IEP placements? Sometimes there are IEP placements and on those there might be personal names, right?
I think more to the point, my understanding is a redaction if there would be identifying information to a family member.
Yeah.
That would then potentially be the upper violation. And so that's what the redaction is. So those two transportation reductions that you see, it sounds like are reimbursement to families to get those students.
Just a little bit of clarification for the biggest items. The, there's Americas, that was forty-six some thousand and also premium dealing for hundred eighty some thousand. Just wanted to know what those are for.
Americas is consists of our staffing agency that we utilize to affect their professionals to our district who work or not employed by the district, but coming with a level of training necessary to support our students with special education needs. What was the other one you mentioned? UHS, it's a hundred eighty something thousand, UHS preman building.
That's gotta be. Thanks, Mr. Martin. Any board member questions around any of this? Okay, then I think the only agenda item is topical action to approve the May check register. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the May check register second.
All in favor? I, I, any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Gus. All right, so that's wrapping up our business office presentation. And I just want to have a little wrap up as we went through a. Um, and I just want to have a little wrap up as we went through a lot, um, and. Oh, you're doing the minutes.
I'm doing the minute, I got it, it was. Turn seconded by Chris. You're good, don't go slow.
I, I know, school perceptions is still extremely patiently waiting, but I, I want to, um. Share with you all what, what Anna and I have been talking about in terms of organizing, um, just sort of in real plain speak, kind of. What's going on with finances, and I've tried to think of it in terms of sort of past, present, future. And it helps me feel less overwhelmed, because the past work we have to do is the audit and the reconciliation. Right, and it sounds like really that's reconciliation, and we're going to talk in, in the to-dos section of our agenda later. About how we can tackle that very cleanly, Anna has a plan. And then there's the current work, which is bills and receipts, right? And ongoing reconciliation, which sort of ties back, but Gus is on bills and receipts and we're bringing in, which is accounts payable, all that. And we're bringing in that ticket bond during the summer, right, to work on that, so that's clean. And then there's the future work, which is budget, um, loan, twenty-three, twenty-four audit. And again, when you break it down like that, we've got a plan. It feels better, so I just want to share with you, that's kind of how I'm organizing my thinking. Um, and Anna is working on like what I think of as next evolution, version two, heading into twenty-four, twenty-five. So I don't know Anna, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think there's a, a coalescing of unfortunate pieces that have come together to create, um, a mess that we have to take ourselves out of. And it is not inconceivable that we can do that work, um, it is going to take some additional resources being pushed at that work, which we are securing to make sure that that happens. Um, and our goal is to really make sure that as we walk into twenty-four, twenty-five and we welcome Michelle Brown, our new business manager on. That she can comment and really work to the points that Carla made, but then also, um, creating clear and consistent processes and procedures going forward. So that we can, we can ensure that the board is kept, uh, robust of what is happening from a financial scope. And that we are meeting those regular deadlines and that our internal processes and systems of control are tighter than they were in the past. So I do think there is some optimism, there is some work that, some heavy lifting of work that needs to be done to close out those unaudited years. And we're going to get after that in, in quick fashion and, um, are, are ready to start moving forward in that process. So thank you for your patience with that, um, and I know that, um, all of us, our community, our stakeholders, most importantly, our students. Staff really want us to make sure that we bring that closure so we can go forward in a positive way, thank you.
Thanks Anna. Woo, alright, on to agenda item. I have find it after all that. B, uh, community survey update. And hopefully they're still with us, school perceptions.
We are here, I do go to bed really early, but I won't hold that against you, I am here.
Thank you. Alright, uh, you have the floor, right?
Sounds good, let me, uh, share my screen, so you have Scott and I here, we're the same folks that were with you in. Want to say with January or maybe early February or maybe it was March, it was pre-election. All my, all my community surveys are blending together here, but pre-election, so for those of you that, uh, that we have not met yet. I do want to briefly introduce ourselves, so my name is Rob Denise, I serve as the research director at School Perceptions. Uh, and Scott and I teamed up on both your survey and your report, and I wanted to give Scott the opportunity to introduce himself as well.
I am Scott Gerard, project manager with School Perceptions, um, and as Rob said, helped put together both the survey on the front end and, and this report on the back end. So happy to be here tonight to answer questions as Rob walks you through it.
As we go through your, your survey, um, bear in mind, there are four color codes that will show up on the right-hand side of each slide. We are going to spend the least amount of time on the background information, that's in blue. Why? Because there's nothing new there, that, those are exactly, those slides represent exactly what was in your survey. So we've either taken screenshots or reproduced the text or whatever, um, to make this report a one-stop shop for you. Not so much needed right this second, because the survey is probably still fresh in your mind coming off this spring. But it will be really helpful two, three, four months down the road, uh, when you scratch your head a little bit, you say, well, how did we word that or? Did we talk about that? And you don't have to worry about digging up an old copy of the survey, it'll all be right here. Yellow is who took your survey. Green is, um, where we'll spend the most time, that's the results and analysis, and then leaving time at the end for wrap-up and questions. Um, so Scott and I introduced ourselves, um, just very briefly about us, um, really the point of this slide is to let you know that this isn't our birth rodeo. Um, this is now our twenty, well, twenty-third year, I suppose, in business, um, we've done over ten thousand staff, parents, student and community surveys. All for school improvement, um, and we're now at, after this spring, at nearly one thousand districts nationwide that we've helped navigate the strategic planning and referendum planning process. More importantly, the good stuff is about you, your survey closed up a little over two weeks ago. You landed at nine hundred and twenty-four total respondents for a thirteen percent response rate, that's pretty normal for a district your size and with your urbanicity. Um, the other way I look at that is I want to make sure that we're getting good representation from your non-parents, non-staff. We'll talk more about those folks in just a bit, um, and I wanted to, I wanted to see you had at least four hundred of those folks. And you surpassed that by quite a bit, um, you were up around five hundred and twenty-five non-parents, non-staff, give or take a few. Um, so point of this slide is, we have the data that we need in order to give you predictive data for something that you could consider in November. Um, the other thing to bear in mind is a, a function of the pool of people that you have to survey. Um, your margin of error is three point three percent, so that's not something, you know, people that are less familiar with statistics, see the word error and they think, oh, what went wrong? And that's really not the case, it's just a matter of how confident can we be in your data based on how many people you can do a survey with. So as we move ahead, I guess I would just ask you to bear in mind that your margin of error is plus or minus three point three percent. So if you're jotting down notes, that would be one thing that I would recommend, three point three percent, we will revisit that. Next up, what is your age? Um, I do want to see good representation of your sixty-five plus here, um, because they will be overrepresented in the polls. Not every age group or age band rather votes in the same proportion, your sixty-five plus will be there on election day. So we want to make sure that they are included in a survey as well, and you did, you're actually overrepresented in your survey. Compared to the sixty-five plus within your district boundaries to the tune of about five percent. Um, so that's good, that, that, that's more than okay to be a little overrepresented in your survey, again, because they're going to be such loyal voters on election day. Um, other than that, you have a very normal age representation here, kind of a bell curve that you have coming out, a lot of those middle bars there between thirty-five and fifty-four. Um, are going to capture a great deal of your parents and a great deal of your staff as well. We then asked, is your primary residence in the district? The reason we have this here, well, I guess the reason we talk about it is twofold, um, one, we're going to focus on the eighty-nine percent that said yes. Because they are the ones that have the opportunity to control an election within your district boundaries. Why are there others? Good question. Um, I want to nip that in the bud right away, there are folks that could get the survey that don't live there, and, and that can happen in one of three instances. Obviously, you live in a very commutable area. If I'm a staff member, I have an email address, I get the survey, but I may live in a different district boundary. Um, if I'm a parent who open and rolls into the district, by definition, I don't live there. Otherwise, I wouldn't need to open and roll in, but I'm a parent, I have an email address, they get the survey. Um, or if I have a household or if I have a residence in the district that has a mailbox, but it's not my primary residence, I'm going to get the survey. That's all fine and good, but we need to weed those people out if they can't vote there, so again, we're going to focus on the eighty-nine percent that said yes. Where do they live? Overwhelmingly in the city of Glendale, um, but you did have at least some small representation from both your major municipalities. Next up then are two questions that are going to lead us to three subgroups, so we want to know how staff are feeling. We want to know how parents are feeling. But then we'll also want to know the no, no, the non-parents, non-staff. Um, they are the, they are the ones that represent the biggest chunk of your community, we'll have a great deal more about them to say in just a couple of minutes. But just for, for pointing out the final questions in your demographic section, these are how we use those, and you're, we're going to talk a lot more about those three subgroups in just a moment. The final demographic question was a preference question. So it does not read, how do you receive information? Because you, you could be doing X, but I really want you to do Y. So it's more of a, how do you want to receive information from us as a board and district? This is in descending order of your non-parents, non-staff, they are represented in purple and will be throughout the report. Newsletters. Your non-parents, non-staff want to learn about what's going on at school through newsletters, send something to their home. I would say kind of in the second level then, you kind of see a little bit of a clustering over the next four. Um, emails, if there's an opt-in, maybe it's a newsletter, or maybe it's other, some other opt-in system. Um, non-parents, non-staff would like to go there and learn about you that way. Um, the website and North Shore Now, and I got all the two papers, I guess, North Shore Now and the Journal Set, they'll kind of round out your, your top five or so from your non-parents, non-staff. Their parents are a bit more balanced, but in a way that's very normal for all districts that we work with. Uh, parents want emails, they want newsletters, they want websites, they want to learn about you on Facebook, and they value the phone notifications as well. The other way to look at this is saying, well, where aren't the bars very long? Um, I wouldn't put a lot of eggs in the Instagram and Twitter baskets, um, it's good to know, you know, if you were thinking about, well, should we have a presence there? I guess the answer would be, I wouldn't spend too much time or resources doing that, because that's just not where people are going to go to learn about you. Um, and rather, it's, you know, the emails, the newsletters, the website and so on, where you want to really make sure your communication efforts are guided. Then we're in a blue slide, so once again, nothing new here. This is exactly what was in your survey, so talking a little bit about how you got to this point, what efforts you've made to balance your budget. Um, the difference between what was going on in Nicolay versus Glendale River Hills, and really making the point that you are two different districts, two boards, two levying authorities. Um, and then the number that people are going to see on about. We are, uh, the survey asked people to consider a five million dollar referendum each year for two years, and then disclosing what you would do with the money. First green slide. The question read, would you support an operational referendum that provides five million dollars each year for two years? Focusing on residents and only your staff residents are encapsulated on this slide. Seventy percent of staff residents said yes to that plan. Parents. Sixty-four percent supporter. Your non-parents, non-staff came in below fifty percent, they are thirty-nine percent supportive of the plan. Why do we do that? I'm going to back up a couple of slides here. Your staff are arguably the most influential group in your community relative to this survey. They probably much more so than you folks as board members, um, are going to get stopped at the post office, they're the ones that get stopped at the grocery store. They are the ones that get stopped at, at the concession stand at a softball tournament. People want to know what's going on from their kid's second grade teacher. So your staff are very influential, so we have to know what they think. At the same time, the other side of that scale, they only represent above one percent of your voters on election day. So really influential, not that many of them. Your parents are in the middle. Obviously, very engaged, very connected by, by definition of being parents. But a quarter of the community is represented on this slide here. So by process of elimination, most of your community to the tune of about seventy-five percent. Is encapsulated in your non-parent, non-staff slide and are represented in purple. So whenever I see that label or whenever I see that color, I always put my eyes there first. So because all of these groups are not the same size, we have to re-weight their support. Based on how big I just told you each of them are. So what this equation is telling me is, if parents are sixty-four percent supportive and they're a quarter of the community, we have to put a point two-five in front. Your non-parents, non-staff came in at thirty-nine percent supportive, if they are three-quarters of the community, we have to put a point seven-five in front. So when we carry out this equation to fruition, this is telling us that if the Glendale River Hills Board of Education. Put the question as described on the ballot today, it would not reach fifty percent support. We would expect approximately forty-five point three percent of your community to support it. We then said, or the, the survey, I guess, rather said, um. For some cost-cutting options from your community members, so. Uh, the, the survey teed it up by, if a community does not support a referendum, you know, while you don't endorse or recommend any of these, you want to leave no stone unturned. So should the district, which is how each of these questions was prefaced, should the district do X thing? In other words, should the district, for instance, delay updating student devices and other technology? If I said yes. I want you to cut X thing. Behind the scenes, to give this a quantifiable measure, yes was given a score of ten. If it was no, I said, no, I don't want you to cut that bit. It was a one, which means the median of that one to ten scale is five point five. So any number that is above five point five. Means your community is telling you that if you need to make cuts, I want you to start with this thing. And there were three. Well, two items across three groups here, I guess, um. Delaying, uh, delay updating student devices and other technology, your parents and your non-parents, non-staff. Both scored above five point five there, which means that they are telling you if you need to make cuts, start with that. And if you need to make further cuts, your non-parents, non-staff, one other item that was above five point five, they are saying if you need to make cuts, do so by delaying updates to curriculum. No other item by subgroup reached five point five. We couldn't fit all of it on one, but you can see then at the very bottom, where are people telling you they really don't want you to cut? Those are things like your course offerings and spending on routine building maintenance. As the survey continued, there was then a section about facility planning. So and as, and as informative, but as few words as possible, written in non-construction and non-architecture speak here. Kind of previewing for people, what facility problems might you ask them to help solve at some point in the future? So whether it's things like, um, safety and security, whether it's things like ADA compliance, your HVAC systems, your electrical systems. Updates to classrooms, your interior finishes, your exterior site work and so on. Um, we're kind of previewing some of the work that could be done, but also noting for folks that this is not something that you are planning to pursue in a facilities referendum in November. And then asked, do you support the district exploring a facilities referendum? Um, at least a majority, or at least a plurality, but a majority in two subgroups said yes, so overwhelming majority of your staff said yes. Go ahead and explore facilities referendum. Nearly two-thirds of your parents said yes. Not quite majority, but certainly a plurality of your non-parents, non-staff are also telling you yes. So what I see here is the permission slip to move forward when you are ready. To revisit this topic, the community has, has now learned a little bit about it, and I guess you have permission here to continue the homework. Um, obviously, you'll get much more clear data from your community when you're ready to say, this is what we're going to do, this is how much it's going to cost. And this is how much it will cost you, depending on how much property value you have, but my takeaway here is that yes beat no. Across all three facility groups. I am going to turn the page a little bit to some district feedback, so that, that concludes more of the. Potential operational and capital, uh, referendum planning side of the world, but there was a, a not insignificant other chunk of your survey related to district feedback. The score here is one to five, so your perfect score that any school could get is five point zero zero, the worst score is one point zero zero. So we got to be somewhere between those ranges, meaning the median is three point zero zero. So anything, that, that's, well, I guess I'll tell you more about how I eyeball it in a second, but I guess bear that in mind, one to five, five being the best, one being the worst. These lines that I'm about to show you will show you that scale, um, and they will also show you, um, what percentage of folks. Either agreed or strongly agreed with each item. There's a lot of numbers on this slide that I want you to take some time over the next few weeks and months to really dig into. But I want to show you how this data is structured, and then I'll provide a summary slide for you. So what this is saying here is by each of our now familiar suburbs, meaning your staff, your parents and your non-parents, non-staff. What percentage of each group either agreed or strongly agreed with each item over here on the left? And what was their score from one to five? Both items are presented here, so there's a lot of numbers. But when I eyeball this for the very first time, there are two things that I'm glancing for. One, is any particular metric above or below majority at fifty percent? And what numbers are above or below three? The good news here is as you eyeball this, in fact, if I look at this slide, or the next slide, there were, there were nine items that we asked people to evaluate. None of them were below fifty percent. Meaning at least a majority of all three of your major subgroups agreed or strongly agreed that you were doing these things in the district. So for instance, just backing up one step, the district provides me with opportunities to offer feedback. At least three-quarters of all your major subgroups agreed or strongly agreed, and you were well north of three in all of those. So that's how I read these, and it's not that I don't care about what's going on on the left here. There's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of text, but that's simply what I'm doing. No item is below majority, no item is below three. To summarize that and make it somewhat more readable, what Scott and I did then is said, well, let's look at staff only. So we just narrowed it on them. And we said, what item are they giving you the highest score on? And then made that list all the way down to the bottom. We then did the same thing for parents. Where did they give you their top score? Down to the bottom. And then we repeated that exercise one more time. Where did non-parents, non-staff give you their highest scoring item? Down to the bottom. Once we had that list then, then we looked across and we said, well, are there any commonalities of things that are floating to the top? Where all three subgroups are saying you're doing a great or a good job on any particular metric, and there were. There are two here that floated to the top for all subgroups. So we are learning that across all three groups, one of your highest scores is how well you're preparing students for high school. And the other one represented in blue is having the support of the community. Same questions, so same scale, nothing, nothing different here. The only thing we did on this slide is we rolled all your respondents together, so we, we, we set aside those subgroups for just a minute here. We're looking at all residents, same items. And we pooled everybody together. And we said, well, in what order are these items showing up based on your one to five scale? Putting that differently, the number one highest rated item that your community is telling you is the district prepares students for high school. Eighty-two percent agreed or strongly agreed, well north of the median. You're right around your agree range there at three point eight two. Blessing and the curse of a list, something's at the top, something's got to be at the bottom. However, even what's at the bottom here, when we pool everybody together, you're still north of three. And two-thirds of your respondents are still agreeing or strongly agreeing with the item that's at the bottom. Probably goes without saying that that's good news, but for my own peace of mind, I will say that when you have north of majority and you're above three, even what's at the bottom, that is a good place to be. What you'll see here, though, is there are two that are at the bottom here communicating with me effectively. And having a website that is an effective place for me to learn about what's going on at school. The good news here is that, you know, fast forward a couple of years, and you choose to repeat your survey and see, you know, are we making progress on any of these metrics? If I zoom way back, you now have really good data on how people want to be communicated with. You know exactly by subgroup how you should be tailoring messages. So what often happens the second and third time we redo this question, these scores go up because you have such good data now on knowing exactly how people want to be communicated with. Just by nature of doing a survey, actually, people's communication satisfaction goes up a little bit. So in some counterfactual world where you didn't do a survey, these numbers might have been even lower. So anyway, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but it's good news to have even your bottom scoring items still be in the agreement range. Superintendent advice, this question read, Glendale River Hills will have a new superintendent on July one, please choose the five pieces of advice you would give to her. Once again, a lot of numbers on this slide, you do need some time to sit with it. But basically, what this is telling us here is for each piece of advice, how important was it for staff in blue, dark blue? How important was it for parents in light blue? And how important was it for non-parents, non-staff in purple? So when I glanced at this the first time, my eyeballing method is, are the bars kind of uniformly long across all the groups? Are they uniformly short? And are there some where the bars are kind of uneven? And you, you can see a couple of, a couple of examples of that here. Being transparent about the district's data and decision-making process, and being willing to listen to various opinions, take a position, and own a final decision are really two that are floating to the top regardless of subgroup. Your staff, you can see their bars jut out a little bit here, engaging with staff to build consensus and ensure they feel valued and heard, and being friendly, accessible, and approachable. So Scott and I did the same exercise. We wanted to summarize this for you, and we said, what are the top pieces of advice your staff have? Top pieces of advice your parents have? Top pieces of advice your non-parents, non-staff have? And then are there some that float to the top so that Anna really knows, okay, day one, on July one, here is really what our community is telling me they expected me. The common items across all three groups, being transparent about the district's data and decision-making process was number one across all three. The second commonality across each, engage with staff to build consensus and ensure they feel valued and heard. And then finally, be willing to listen to various opinions, take a position, and own that final decision. All right, wrapping up the few, last few slides, overall satisfaction, change scales slightly here, one to four, so now your perfect score isn't five anymore, it's four point zero zero, but the worst possible score remains at one point zero zero. There were two items beyond what people already answered that we asked people about to evaluate. The question read, how is the district doing in each of the following areas? Those items or those areas being delivering a high-quality education and keeping the public informed. We have some corroborating data here. So the middle of this scale is two and a half, one to four, the middle is two and a half. You're north of two and a half by subgroup and delivering a high-quality education. But you've heard a couple of times now, there's one area to really improve, whether it's for Anna, whether it's for you as a board, the district writ large, we need to improve communications. And you can see that borne out each of the three subgroups, well, I shouldn't say that, parents were right around the median, otherwise your staff and your non-parents, non-staff were a little bit below two and a half, the middle of that scale. Different way to look at it, kind of like what we did before, same question, same items, but now we pooled all residents together. Seventy-two percent are saying you're doing a great or a good job at delivering a high-quality education for a score that's above two and a half, at two point eight two to be specific. And then keeping the public informed, much like what I just said, you are below majority at forty-eight percent, and you're below the median at two point four. Last but hardly least, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? Couple of different ways that Scott and I like to look at this. First, just your simple score. The higher the score, the more likely is somebody is to recommend you. You're north of five, you're north of neutral, so in total, your respondents are more likely to recommend you than they are not to. Obviously, a great place to be. Second way I look at this is just real eyeballing. Do you have more greens than you do reds? And the answer is yes. You want this to be a little top-heavy? And you are. Third way that I like to look at it, I do a simple sum of your tens or nines and your eights. When I do that, so eleven, eleven percent give you a perfect score. Eleven and ten is twenty-one, plus another fourteen is thirty-five percent, when I add up my eights, my nines, and my tens. So you're a little above third. The reason I do that is the research behind this question suggests that folks that give you an eight, nine, and ten serve as ambassadors on your behalf. They are the ones that will go out and talk well about you without you having to motivate them to do so. They will initiate that conversation with their friends or family members. You don't need to do anything to get them to do so. The fact that you have over one-third there, like, once again, is a great place to be. If I finish off my math, if I remember my math, I looked up at thirty-five, you got twelve for forty-seven, fifty-six? So you have fifty-six percent, you got north of majority that are six or above. Again, a good place to be, a majority of your respondents have a more positive connotation of you than they do negative. Okay, that was drinking from a fire hose for me, and I saw the data a couple of times, so I'm going to take a drink of water. By all means, though, let us know, both Scott and I, what questions you have about the data, or what's coming up next.
Visitors, visitor, do you have any questions? Okay, board members? Chris?
I noticed only one percent of the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds responded to the survey, and I'm wondering if you have any information about how typically they tend to vote on referendum?
I get pretty excited when that reaches two percent. So you are as average as average could possibly be. We can make a template and put one there and never change it, it would probably be right. So that is very normal.
Better to your question, I'll try again.
I'm sorry, let, let me, let me rephrase that a little bit. I'm not so much interested in how many didn't respond, I'm wondering how that translates into actual voter behavior? If our young people are voting in elections, and if there's sort of a trend in how they more recently had this kind of education, tend to vote.
Yeah, so I suppose you can look up voter records, I'm sure that's public information, what percentage of your voters on election day were eighteen to twenty-four? My guess is that they were the lowest out of all of them, and that's not a Glendale River Hills thing, that is not a Wisconsin thing, that's a nationwide thing. Some of it is just logistical, if I'm choosing to pursue college, I'm just not home, or maybe I vote elsewhere, or maybe I vote where I moved, or maybe I vote where I'm attending college. So I, I don't know if it's exactly one percent that makes up the eighteen to twenty-four, say, in the last presidential election. But my guess is that it is pretty low. And fortunately, the fact that you're not different here than others, I know that's not your exact question here, but the fact that you're no different than others also, I think, lends credibility to the data. Our predictions are, are spot-on to about ninety-four to ninety-five percent of the time, and, and I may have talked about that, I don't remember the first time I met with you. But I guess I just want to briefly define what a success is in our world then as well, while I have the mic. If we believe, or if the data, I guess, rather, tells us that a referendum is going to pass, and then ultimately on election day, that passes, that's a win in a way. But the other side of that coin is also true. If the data tells us a referendum is going to fail, and a district takes that plan verbatim to ballot, and it fails, well, that's still a win in a way, because we have made an accurate prediction based on what the data is telling us. And I feel that we can give you an accurate prediction with the data that you have here, even with your eighteen to twenty-four being one percent. So that's a long way of saying, I'm not sure what the voting proportions are in the last presidential election, but you are not uncommon if, if they were at the bottom of the age groups that you see here.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members, or anyone else?
Thank you for this, I might just send it to work. With regards to the results for the referendum, like, what is your, the referendum question about passing, what is your interpretation there? Like forty-five point three percent feels not as positive as I would hope, but perhaps your interpretation is different?
Yeah, good question, thoughtful question. I think that if you took this to ballot right now, the way it was worded, Scott and I do believe that it would fail as it's written. However, at the same time, based on the amount of support that you have here, taking into account that margin of error, you know, it was, I think I had you jot down at the beginning, if you were taking notes, plus or minus three point three percent. Obviously, there is a pesky plus and a minus, you know, so it could be forty-two, but if your margin of error broke more towards positive, you'd be looking at about forty-eight percent, and maybe a few of your undecideds. So my takeaway here is that your question as it stands would fail. However, with the amount of support that you have, you could consider a question and put it on the ballot, but it would need to be different than what was tested here. The danger always of putting something exactly on the ballot is, and I'm not saying you would do this, but there's a perception of, well, you knew you were going to do it anyhow before you ever asked, so why did you ask? So I think based on this, it's going to have to change in some way, but then the question is, well, what, what do you go out for? How would you go back to your community and say, hey, we heard you? What we tested wasn't going to be supported, so we had to back up the bus a little bit, including some of these numbers here where your community told you to cut, and go up for something slightly smaller than what you tested.
So I guess towards that end too, then, do you believe that by changing the question, have you seen communities that maybe changed their question, or, what did I say? If we were, you believe that like communication and messaging, like, if that improves for a district, that like between now and referendum time, that, that communication and messaging, changing the question, that those can have a positive impact?
Yes. I can give you a longer answer if you want, but my short answer is yes.
Does this, does, does the, some of this survey give you any inclination into what a better question would be?
Meaning like, what number do you go for?
I don't know, I guess is it just a number, or I mean, is it, I guess, I don't know, never mind, I take it back.
Well, let me, let me take a shot at it, I guess that, and I get, I'll, I'll give you a slightly better answer than one word for your other question. People want to know that you heard that, so I think going out, you know, seventy times, whatever the, seventy times between now and November, we heard you, we got, we didn't get it exactly right on the survey, but there is enough support to do something. Here's how we change plans. Here's what we're going to do, here's how we heard you, here's how we learned from the survey, and even the people that didn't take it then are like, well, shoot, they didn't take it and they did something with the data. And oftentimes, your response rates then go up no matter where you start the next time around. So people want to know. Now, at the same time, you should ship stuff out as soon as you know what you're going to do. People aren't always ready to read it until Halloween, but it doesn't mean they don't want information between now and then. It means that right away, when you know what you're going to do, you begin shipping out, here's what we're going to do, here's why we changed, here's how we're going to use your money, here's how we listen to your data. It doesn't mean that I'm going to say yes yet, but it does mean that I know that this wasn't a box-checking exercise for you, that you spent time with the data. You don't know, oh, related to, you know, is there a number? No, there's not, you know, we, we don't have data here to say four point eight is where you cross the threshold. I believe the way that you set up your survey, though, was still the right call, because this is what motivates people to take it. People don't want to create your plans, they want you to create a plan, and they want to tell you whether they like it or not. So you had a very clear and straight up or down answer, either I like it or I don't. You had a bit more no's here than yeses, but response rates tend to go down if people have to say, well, I like this, but I don't like this, and I like this, and here's what you include in a referendum. You know best as board members what the district needs, so I think the way you set up your question, I, I still stand by, that was a wise way to do it.
Thank you, that is helpful, thanks Rob.
Yeah, my, my own takeaway is that we see a high call for transparency. And I put that together with people want newsletters. And we've already been talking about improving communication, so my takeaways are, one, we got to do a fiscal newsletter, and we got to keep communicating out about budget. Two, we need to do the budget work, which is, you know, what we spent two hours today already talking about, right? We got to do that budget work, tighten up those numbers, figure out what we really need, communicate out, probably look at town halls this fall. Start the, I mean, I, I was thinking about it, we really haven't had positive, optimistic press on our budget situation, right? We got blasted in the news, and then the news went someplace else. They're not here to show all the hard work we're doing, so we have to deliver that message to our community, because the news isn't delivering it for us.
Yes, yeah, what I think of is though too, is that we have been focusing a lot on the budget. And I think we do have a plan, so I guess I just wonder and would love to sort of just think on how those communications may focus to being about students and the referendum and the lack of funding, because as you do see people reporting on other districts right now, too, it has moved less from the negative space, and if we message it right, we can talk about what, some of the real things that are impacting our budget regardless of the situation we find ourselves in, so I think that just really thoughtful, you know, I don't know that they want all the details of the hard budget work, but we can say we're doing it, so, yeah, 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 okay.
We'll, we'll be getting a copy of this presentation, correct, to be able to review it and roll it over? Thank you. Attention in board talks again, since it's been discussed here in open session.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have another question. I'm, uh, if any of us kind of me wonders how our stats and personnel of the district and how people feel about our district compares to other districts, which I've heard you talk about in past presentations.
Yep.
Conference stuff, so is that something you know or could tell us, or is that something? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yes, so we can pass that along to Hannah. Uh, right now, we, we prioritized just your data here for the sake of expediency and get into it in time, but yeah, Hannah can, Hannah can get to that.
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
Schools, school perceptions, Ben, thank you so much for coming, sticking with us this late.
No problem. Thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Take care, have a good night, bye-bye.
All right, on to item C, policies. Um, what is before us is a recommended action uh, to have a motion to approve the second reading of this last batch of policies listed in the agenda. Anything need to be said about it, Hannah? Other than what I said? Okay. This is the last, although there's some Title IX policies that are gonna be reviewed uh, because the new regulation is going into effect this summer. So is there a motion to approve the second reading of all the policies listed in the agenda? There second?
Second.
Right, any discussion?
Yes, so there is with regards to uh, policy one four four point one, it's noted as requiring board discussion. You can fill it out lately. In board talks, under policies?
Oh. Like the actual policy section? Policy number?
Policy, it's probably policy number zero one four four point one. There's a notation that there needs to be board discussion, there's
Compensation?
Yep.
Which policy dropped?
Um, it's book zero zero for public, you'd like that for public, zero, two thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand.
So there's zero one.
P O zero one four four point one, compensation. Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed, blah, 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 or board discussion. Oh, it's expenses for board members?
Yeah, I only, I just, I was concerned that if we were passing it and it wasn't completed, that
Looks like an option has been selected. Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed when incurred in the performance of the board member's duties or in the performance of functions authorized by the board.
Oh, my guidelines have been established for proper reimbursement.
You have a view, Karen? On what should be done here? You wanna see where?
So I was kind of, uh, very comfortable with everything except for F. I wanted
Yeah.
Other people's insights into F. So F says when the board attends a community or a related event, it's a board function, or a board member attends, as a designated representative any current expenses, including mileage. I don't see that as necessary.
No, I agree. There's a couple of things. E would need a
You're wondering about E?
Pre-purchase approval, if such approval is not possible, post-purchase naturally approved. No, if it exceeds, I got you.
Wow, what is boardmanship?
Uh, like the budget cycle workbook, right?
Oh.
I would say seventy-five dollars there. The budget cycle book was sixty or something.
Okay, so E at seventy-five, and don't select F. Right, let's select everything else.
And H means, uh, I would say fourteen, fourteen calendar days?
Fourteen calendar days, fourteen.
All right.
We'll make those selections before they are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen, for catching that. Well done. A plus. Um, all right, anything else? All right, all in favor of approving the second reading of all the policies listed in the agenda with the revisions, uh, or the selections to policy zero one four four point one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With none opposed, the motion passes. And I think that's it, isn't it? Isn't that the last of our policies?
Well, yes.
Round one. Well done, well done.
Yeah.
Okay, item five, board member reports. CISA update from Karen, PTO foundation update from Ben Cal. Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, okay, for PTO foundation report, so I attended their, uh, most recent meeting, which was a calendaring of events. Um, both organizations, I believe, are still looking for folks who wanna get involved in leadership. Foundation meetings will occur the second Thursday of each month, September through June, except March, which is first Thursday. Those are from seven to eight in the Glendale's library, and every PTO occurs right before, from six to seven. They have set dates for many of the events in advance, so that's gonna be great, and I think they'll be able to share those out, and it's will be calendared, so folks will be able to keep those on their radar. Um, and yeah, I think just essentially still really looking for volunteers and folks who wanna step up to me, so. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the CISA one convention, I have to say, this is, um, an interesting and rather short-lived opportunity unless you join their, um, board of control. So, um, are you guys all familiar with CISA?
Okay.
So there's forty-five districts in our CISA one, and we gather on the twenty-first to elect members of the board of control. These are people who will meet virtually monthly. Um, usually like the third Tuesday of the month. It's an eleven-member board. So it's opportunities for additional leadership, if anyone on the school board is so interested. Um, Sue Doyle, by the way, says hello, she is in charge of CISA number one. And she and I go back a long time in a variety of ways. So CISA does a lot of things. Um, I'm most closely acquainted with their OTPT conference, they run it for the state, which is great. Um, but they also have done a few other things. So they've refreshed their literacy hub for Act Twenty. Um, they have a, uh, PBL, which is implementing learner-centered, learner-centered practices, which is a teacher training program that is just an additional access point as we have this huge teacher deficit. Um, and nationally, they've launched this new personalized learning program that they're putting a lot of time and energy into. Um, but I think most importantly, what we did at this meeting, which was like less than an hour, was we elected Larry Ducks. He is a Pwaki school board member, he has a lot of historical knowledge of the board of control, um, which is good. And then we also elected a new member from Elm Grove, Dr. Brita Uru Diaro, and I apologize if I mispronounced her name. Um, she's a physician who is currently primarily parenting, not practicing. Um, relatively new to the Elm Grove School Board, but she was very excited to, um, add her voice to the board of control for CISA one. That was it.
Thank you for that update. All right, wonderful, wonderful. We are on to, um, the possibility of a closed session. To formalize a decision. Um, would anybody like to make that motion?
I move to motion into recess, to recess into closed session for section eighteen, I'm sorry, nineteen point eight five one F, to formalize the decision regarding the official complaint hearing that took place on June eleventh.
So second? All in favor? Oh, wait, roll call vote. Katie Avalance?
I'm.
Chris Robinson?
I'm.
Danielle Bailey?
I am.
Karen Dunwell?
I am.
Carla Pennington Cross votes aye, and so we're gonna go into closed session. Um, hopefully it won't last too long, and then we will reconvene out here to go over to-do list items, future agenda topics, et cetera. Can, can you say? All right, is the recording back up? All right, we're back in open session, and under item six B, is there a motion?
I'm going to adopt a decision related to the June eleventh hearing as discussed in closed session.
There a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. All right, moving on to item seven A, review of to-do items. Uh, we continue to have on our running to-do lists, looking out into the future, the employee handbook, uh, Good Hope update, the WASD retreat, which I don't know if we talked about this last time. We are scheduling for the July tenth meeting, which we already have on the books. Um, and so we can, that's the date that works, and so we can just do the retreat at that meeting. If that sounds good. We're gonna be getting a buildings and grounds update in July, and then back to you, Anna.
Back to me. Okay, a couple other, uh, I think, a couple other communication pieces to, to complete address and the follow-up on some taking the deeper that I've been to some of the education, the production, I think would be important for us to, to take up with. Um, the other piece of business would be, um, uh, we have a recommendation for beer for our account of self-assistance. Um, she is looking at doing that for twenty-two, twenty-three, potentially twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, she's provided us with a cost that is under five thousand dollars, but I just want to have, um, I can bring that forward to the board for, uh, discussion and approval, and come over her plan, um, if we would move to move forward with her, but I would like to get going as swiftly as possible, which may require a special meeting if that's what the board
So there's two days with two ways we can do this. It's under five thousand dollars, so we don't technically have to improve it. Okay, um, but knowing that we're trying to work together and be transparent, we can still ask for the privilege of looking at the proposal, um, and improving it, which also shows support. So that's for discussion here, whether this is something that we want to just have Anna email us um, the proposal, and we could give her feedback, or should we schedule a brief Zoom meeting? Which would probably engage a very small closed session. Uh, in case there's any dollars and stuff that we would not typically discuss in the open session, and then having an open session vote on. Just a question of how you guys want to proceed.
Uh, if it's under the limit, I don't wanna lose time, say help for it.
I, I would actually agree. I think that, uh, entering into the record tonight, that we had this discussion, that it's under the threshold, that this is replacing what we already voted on with regards to Ben's role, because that, that role, he's not able to fulfill. So, so those monies are somewhat we're not leveraging all the monies from the last time.
Right, Ben Brother is not.
Right, so Ben Brother was unable to fulfill the obligation, and therefore will not be billing us for any of the, I think it was ninety-two hours that we planned for him, so there will be zero costs involved with that, so it would just be looking at replacing that with someone who can come in and do the work, and the dollar a pound for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year would sit there, and I think we have time then to
Yes.
revisit it, there would be additional costs for taking on that following year.
Katie?
I'm gonna close the end board, but that's like, okay. If this, as, as soon as we be able to meet, because we would have to notice it, it would be Thursday.
Yep.
Yeah, just, just do it.
So what, what I would ask is that you, um, could you forward to all the board, um, the proposal email that she sent you?
Yes, I can include that in an update to the board, and just give you all the information around the plan and and provide that information, and then, um, in our next, uh, our next board meeting, like I could include that as well as including that.
Perfect. All right, so that doesn't mean it has to be on our to-do list then. Um, could have been, doesn't have to be. Uh, anything else that you all want to add to the to-do lists?
I'm just wondering, should we be updating the Good Hope info packet in July?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be in July now, right? It currently says June. And we don't have cows anymore. Yeah, so a July meeting.
Well, we have one. We would have one meeting in July outside of the
The retreat.
The retreat, so
Right, so the second July meeting.
So thinking about the timeline on that and what other businesses need to be conducted, so she for that last year in July.
Okay, um, anything else? All right, future agenda topics, item seven B. I've been on everyone's mind. Um, board debrief. I'll start by saying, uh, it took three hours, but we covered a lot. I think we did really well. That's my debrief.
I always say that a meeting has to be as long as it needs to be to get the content delivered appropriately, and I think that tonight, that's what this meeting was. So it was well worth three hours.
Yep.
That business office discussion was very needed, and I'm glad with the plan that we are moving forward, and I'm thankful that Baird, um, is helping facilitate that at site and make those recommendations.
You not have to have to say. Correct.
Um, I've now been processing this for a few days, but I, I think we got a lot of information tonight, a lot of good information, public got a lot of really good information, so I'm gonna be on the same page. I, I'm excited that this is, seems like it's finally going to be moving forward at kind of more rapid pace.
Oh, I'm gonna bring it back to say, we talked about this in closed session, there's stuff that happens that the public doesn't see, but I just appreciate the way we're working together, um, the way, way we're able to collaborate, listen to each other, uh, be open and providing feedback and criticism, being responsive to it as a collective as a board, um, I really appreciate that. All right, last item on the agenda. There are a bunch of them, Jerry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.